I'd like to bring to order the San Rafael. I'd like to bring to order the San Rafael City Council Meeting of Monday, December 3rd, 2018. Ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as all.
Prior to this meeting, we did have a workshop pertaining to certain matters of Marin sanitation service. We'll move on to our agenda, and there were no closed meetings, and therefore we'll move immediately into the open time for public expression. It's an opportunity for you to address us on items that aren't on this evening's agenda. We won't be able to act upon them, but we would nevertheless be interested in any points that you might wish to bring to our attention. In that regard, I have two cards, and we'll start with them, and then anyone else that wishes to address us, starting with Alex Stadner.
Alex Stadner, thank you for seeing me. In this county, which does very well on many aspects when we're compared to other counties and cities around the country, we do unfortunately, very poorly, when it comes to racial equality. The average life expectancy spread between -- can you hear me? The average life expectancy spread between Marin City and some parts of our county is seventeen years. There's a history of racism, historic and current, in this county, yet a name which symbolizes racism and slavery to many remains on our public schools. And this is a tragedy, I believe, and it's time to change. So I'm here to advocate a name change for Dixie Elementary School and the Dixie School District. There's been some leadership, including yourself, Gary Phillips, thank you for showing support. And change is coming, so we'd appreciate more support from the council. Thank you.
Thanks for addressing us this evening. I know it's not a city council matter, so we won't be dealing with it directly. Next, we'll turn to Aaron, I'm not certain of your last name, Aaron, but it looks like Ba- Bawiya? What is it?
Alarcon.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Alarcon, and I'm the Executive Director of the In-Home Supported Services IHSS Public Authority. We are an independent government agency under the umbrella of the county's Health and Human Services Department. In case of the honorable members of the council or the public is not aware of what IHSS is, it is a statewide program administered by each county under the direction of the California Department of Social Services. It provides those with limited income who are disabled, blind, and over the age of sixty-five with in-home care services to help them remain safely at home. At the present moment, our county has approximately two thousand individuals that receive IHSS. This number is growing on a yearly basis, which is not surprising considering that Marin County is the oldest county of the Bay Area as far as the median age population, and that one out of four residents is over the age of sixty-five, number that will go to one out of three in the next ten years. What is the role of the Public Authority, and why am I here? The role of the Public Authority is to recruit, enroll, and train caregivers for the recipients of the IHSS program. We are different than IHSS because our role is to make sure that the recipients of the program have access to a vetted and qualified caregiver. And why am I here? I'm here to bring awareness about the need of caregivers for the recipients of IHSS in our county. Currently, there is a huge deficit statewide of people interested in becoming care providers. Why? For the simple reason that the growth of individuals, especially elderly, requiring in-home care surpasses the growth of people choosing this profession, especially here in our county. County government is doing their part to meet this need, however, it is not enough. I'm going to leave some business cards and some material in the back, and I will follow up with the members of the council and see how San Rafael City and my agency can partner in this enterprise. Thank you.
And thanks for joining us this evening. Anyone, anyone else wish to address us? Seeing -- I'm sorry? Yes, to address us on items that are not on this evening's agenda. Hi. Pull the mic down. Thank you, thank you.
Salama Lox, Commissioner for San Rafael, and I'm just here to mention that our meeting on Thursday is going to be at the --
It may be a little bit closer. Thank you.
I've never had to do that before. Okay. Did you get my name? Salama Lox, I am the Commissioner, I am the San Rafael Commissioner to the Commission on Aging, and wanted to announce that our meeting on Thursday of this week is going to be at the Marin Valley Mobile Country Club, 100 Marin Valley Drive in Navajo. And Mike McGuire, our California Senator, is going to be speaking. You'll have an opportunity to ask him questions, but he will be discussing his goals and visions for the coming year, his coming term. That was it. And then the other item is for the city to consider putting a, painting a line in front of the driveway of two places in Marin, in San Rafael. Getting into the main post office on Bellum is really, you know, difficult, needs a line. And the other place is getting into the Citibank, it needs a line too, so that people don't put their car there and you're trying to make a left turn in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for joining us this evening. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Please come out. Provide your name if you would, please. Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Constance Barker. Among other things, I am the representative to the Executive Board of SEIU 2015, the Long-Term Care Workers Union that represents the workers in Marin County in the IHSS program that you just heard referenced by the Public Authority's Executive Director. And since I just happened to be here tonight, I didn't know he was going to do that, I wanted to come forward and concur with his remarks about the grievous caregiver shortage and the trouble that we have retaining people in this profession, and how we need to be working with all the cities and the state to improve wages, improve benefits, improve training, improve everything about this program. It is a vital program, and it is necessary to do this. Thank you.
Sure, and thanks for your comment. Anybody else? Seeing no one will close and return for the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a few brief announcements tonight. I also just wanted to point out that there are some open seats in the front here, if anyone's standing and wants to sit down kind of on this side, and then most of them, I think, are over on this side. A few announcements that I have tonight is that this week we'll be starting a new pilot program, which is having a library outlet at Northgate Mall, and it's pretty exciting for us. We haven't done this before. It's kind of a pop-up library space and a vacancy at the mall, and we're working closely with Marin County. Sarah Jones, the county librarian, and the mall owners, Merlon Geyer, have donated the space for us to be able to, to do this. It's a prototype, prototype of a concept. We've been working, looking at new library facilities in various parts of the city, in Terre-Linda downtown, and in East San Rafael, and this was an idea that came up of something that was worth trying, of seeing if this would be popular, if people would like to be able to take advantage of library services right where they're at, in, at Northgate Mall. So there's going to be book and media checkouts, holds pickup, the 3D printer, and some programming. There'll be staff during peak hours. So I just wanted to bring it up because it's something that's a little new, and it's because it was an idea that didn't come up all that long ago, and we, staff was very excited about it and quickly jumped on it and made it happen. So if you see a library space at Northgate Mall, you'll know why that's there. Also, as you know, SB 1 was not repealed on the November election, and we're going to be proceeding with our sidewalk repair program, which was a partnership with a community where both the city and homeowners share in the cost of sidewalk improvement. There's regular updates on our webpage, so I won't go into a long update now, but I'll just say that there are one hundred and eighty-three property owners that is participating in the program right now, and will start sidewalk improvements this month. So the first neighborhoods that are, that are being, that we're starting the program with is Sun Valley, and then also Gerstal Park and Bret Hart, and then there's a whole list of places to, to follow that of the one hundred and eighty-three property owners that signed up. And we're hopeful that with success of this particular, this first inaugural of the program, that we'll get even more kind of next time that we offer the program. Another item is that it's the time of year for San Rafael Santa Cop, and it provides toys and clothing to families in need. It's going on, you probably saw the toy collection barrel outside in our lobby, and there are also lots of other ways to participate. So it's sanrafilantacop.org is all of the ways, if people are interested in finding out how to, how to participate in that. And then the last thing I had, just as a quick date announcement, as you may know, the 2018 Lighted Boat Parade, Saturday, December 15th. So that's continuing a many-year holiday tradition. Starts at 5:30 PM, rain or shine. I understand the parade this year was rain, not shine, for the downtown parade of lights, so we'll see what happens with the, with the lighted boat parade. And the beneficiary of this year's parade for the lighted boat parade is the Santa Cop program. So I just wanted to give you those few announcements. Thank you.
Good, and thanks for doing so. And your point with regard to the library is, Northgate is, is well taken, because right now, for those that don't know, we're exploring the possibility of expanding the library services we're offering, and perhaps to include North San Rafael as a location. So this would be a good test, test case. So keep that in mind, and perhaps use that facility if you're so interested. And the sidewalk program, we know that we have sidewalks that are certainly in need of repair, and this is first step in doing so. So I'm encouraged by the numbers. We were originally going to limit it to one hundred and fifty, but it's expanded to, to one hundred and eighty-two. So I'm pleased about that as well. So thank you, Jim, for, for your report. With that, we'll move to the consent calendar items, that is item four, four A through quite a few tonight, through M. Does anyone wish to have an item or items held? Seeing none. I'll ask for any public comment with regard to any of these items before we take action on all of them with a single motion. Seeing no one will return, and I'll ask for either comments or a motion with regard to these items.
I'm of approval of four A through four N.
If you, move to the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips. I am at our curious four zero. Thank you very much. We'll now go to the fun part, the special presentation recognizing Eric Holm. So join me, please. Eric, see you brought a few friends. How are you?
We're all friends.
Of course, of course. I actually have two resolutions that I wish to, to recite. So you brought your friend, your special friend.
I did, I brought him around.
Hey, hey, sure, hey. Absolutely. As I mentioned, we have two resolutions, and so I'll touch on both of them if it's okay with you, and then ask for your insightful comments as per usual.
I'm going to speak?
Well, I don't know, for a limited amount of time, of course. In any case, resolution appreciation to Eric, Eric Holm. Eric Holm is a special guy, as you'll, as you'll agree and soon understand, perhaps more than you might. But we've said, recognize Eric, Eric Holm served the Parks and Recreation Commission in the City of San Rafael for eight years, from 2010 to 2018, and Eric served advisory capacity in City of San Rafael Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and became the face of the Park and Recreation Commission, attending numerous park tours and neighborhood events, taking great pride in representing the City of San Rafael, and Eric served under two mayors, Albert J. Boro and myself, Gary O. Phillips. It's actually, oh.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I almost read it. In any case, sorry, it's inside joke.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Several city council members, two city managers, Nancy McCall and Jim Schutz, and provided advice with two Directors of Community Services, Scarlett McCarty and Susan Endred Wax, during his tenure, and Eric's love for lacrosse, sailing, baseball, helped in play an instrumental role in bringing back the community's love for baseball with the City of San Rafael Pacifics, and was supportive of their establishment from the beginning. We know that. And Eric provided advice and insight in relations to the variety of projects and initiatives which included major improvements, Terre-Linda Community Center Pool, Victor Jones Park Playground Revitalization Center, city's beach park through the lease agreement with Terre-Pont Crossroads, and proposed renovation of Albert Park Playground, and upgrades to many neighborhood parks as well as major A-related projects. Be resolved, City of San Rafael hereby is express our heartfelt appreciation for Eric's service on the Park and Recreation Commission. Eric, you've been great in that regard. Fun has just begun. I have one more.
I'm in a blush.
I would hope. You deserve to. And this also is for Eric, serving on the ADA Access Advisory Committee for the City of San Rafael for nine years, from 2009 to 2018, and in 2004, City of San Rafael entered a settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, which required that barriers to programs, facilities, and services be removed. Consequently, ADA Access Committee, Advisory Committee was established to ensure that the City of San Rafael was in compliance, and Eric played a significant role in bringing San Rafael into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. During his tenure, he created a community that became increasingly more accessible to residents and visitors with disabilities, and for the last fourteen years, the city has worked to comply with the requirements of settlement agreement, and Eric has been instrumental for nine of those years, bringing his insight, knowledge, and experience to the committee. And Eric specifically helped implement the accessibility curb ramps to benefit people with low vision and no vision, as well as detectable warning devices, and Eric took great honor in serving the community through his active participation on the ADA Advisory Committee for the City of San Rafael. His lighthearted and friendly demeanor was sorely missed, or will be sorely missed. And therefore, the City of San Rafael hereby expresses heartfelt appreciation for Eric Holm's service on the ADA Access Advisory Committee. Isn't that great? How many years is that?
Unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I will keep my, thanks, I will keep, I'll keep my comments brief. Insert applause here. So I just wanted to say, City Council, Mr. Mayor, it has been an extreme honor to represent and serve the people of San Rafael in these capacities, and in my current capacity with the 2040 Steering Committee, and gosh only knows where we're going from here, but thank you very much. It is a true honor, and thank you all for being here.
Eric, you know, I, I read a lot, but Eric's been a real good friend for an awful Eric's a special guy. In any case, moving on to the public hearing regarding rental discrimination ordinance. long time, and what he's contributed to the city, we read, of course, a lot of it, but Andrew.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
his whole attitude and approach to life and the approach, and helping the City of San
So we are here tonight for the first reading of the Fair Housing Ordinance for Source
Rafael is really remarkable.
of Income Protections for Renters in San Rafael.
So again, I'm glad you brought all your friends.
I gave a longer presentation on October 1st, so I'll just hit some of the highlights tonight.
In any case, thank you, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to say hi to you.
I know we have a, a big agenda. So this is a follow-up action that the County of Marin started approximately two years
Oh, a photo, sure. Eric, you're in the center?
ago, and the idea is that we're trying to create consistent rental regulation throughout
There we go.
the county by adopting this Source of Income Ordinance.
Well, there we go.
The ordinance has now been adopted by the county, but also the town of Fairfax, the City of Navajo, and then as of last week, the town of San Anselmo. So the idea here is that, actually, almost exactly fifty years ago, Congress passed the Fair Housing Act as a way to protect buyers and renters from housing discrimination. A couple of years later, they passed the Community Development Act, which created actually housing vouchers. And so the idea between the two is that we're trying to both prevent discrimination in the housing market, and then affirmatively further that by actually giving people housing choice through rental assistance in the community, instead of having actual place-based, government-run public housing. Unfortunately, even though it's been about fifty years, we continue to face challenges on this front. This whole issue started about two years ago because the Housing Authority was issuing vouchers to local residents, but those folks were not able to lease up, and as a result, only fifty percent of voucher holders were actually able to place their vouchers in the community. Unfortunately, even today, this was earlier today, signs of this discrimination persist in our rental market. So these are some examples of listings throughout the community where I've, I've highlighted where the landlord has actually said that they will not be taking or accepting Section Eight. So you can see that this is all over the community, and many people tend to think that Section Eight or other assistance programs primarily just apply to folks that are experiencing homelessness, but this is also veterans, people with disabilities, seniors across the board. So what this ordinance does is basically prohibits landlords from refusing to rent to someone because they are using a voucher, or basically a third-party rental assistance source. They also cannot change the terms of a lease because of a voucher, and they cannot publish or advertise in the way that you just saw. What it does not do, however, is, is take away landlords' right to choose who they're renting to. So importantly, this does leave room for landlords to still check credit scores, to check references. Obviously, you don't have to lower the rent just because someone has a voucher. Marin Housing Authority does have pretty generous payment standards, but someone does have to have the actual income to be able to rent the unit. As a, when we presented this as a draft on October 1st, council had some feedback for staff, and we've incorporated that and brought it back tonight in the final ordinance. First and foremost was the idea of exceptions. So we had a little bit of a discussion around whether or not any types of units would be exempted from this ordinance, and the main concern was that we didn't want to actually do anything to damage the emerging field in San Rafael of accessory dwelling units and junior second units. Those are an important, exponentially growing housing type in our community, so we wanted to make sure that this ordinance didn't unduly burden that sector. And so staff went back and we tried to interview as many people as we could. Over the last four years, seventy-seven households have actually initiated creating a unit in San Rafael. We were able to talk to about a third of those folks, and we asked them, again, point-blank, would this have affected your willingness or your plans to actually create a unit? The results were pretty resounding, it would not have had an impact. So twenty-three percent of people said that, yes, it would have caused them to not pursue their unit. About a third said that they were indifferent, and then forty-five percent said that they were unlikely to have stopped pursuing, creating their unit if this ordinance had been in place. And one thing that I don't have here, but it came back in the, the feedback, was that I would say about fifty percent of the people that are creating units, it's actually for a family member or someone that they know, so it really is creating that, that close familial unit, close to the, the main house. The other thing that I just wanted to show you is that this is all of the units that have been created over those four years. So as you can see, aligned with the goal of fair housing and the voucher program, is that these units have been all over the community. So if we're really trying to affirmatively further fair housing, this would achieve that by not having any exceptions. The second area that's been slightly updated is the enforcement piece, so I think actually Councilmember Bushy had brought some of this up, but under the civil enforcement piece of the ordinance, there had been kind of a more black and white. If it's been violated, then someone is entitled to basically three times the damages, or basically it was three times the rent for the unit. So we changed the language to say "up to" to provide more discretion, instead of having such a immediately high penalty. We had also originally had a thousand dollars as the criminal fine, and that is actually not something that we can do based on our charter, so we went back and revised that down to five hundred. This had been modeled off of the other jurisdictions that had been doing these as well. And importantly, even though there is a criminal component to this, most of the, in fact, all of the action through this so far has been civil in nature, and it's primarily, as you heard last time, Legal Aid of Marin and Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California reaching out to property owners or landlords that are in violation of this, and trying to work with them in a positive way to remedy whatever the problem is. Again, I think over the last two years, you've really seen, in addition to these types of measures, the Marin Housing Authority, the county, have been really working to build relationships with the landlord community, and I think have been having a lot of success. So the idea here is really to have at least some enforcement mechanism in place, but to not, again, be overly aggressive to the landlord community. So with that, I will turn it over to questions and public comment.
And thanks for your report and the follow-up on the discussion we had a few weeks ago. Questions? John?
Sure, thanks, Andrew. First question is, in, on exhibit one in the staff report, with the current payment standards and the fair market value, the question being, and help you connect, make me understand, that if a one-bedroom current fair market value is twenty-five hundred dollars, or twenty-four ninety-nine, and the payment standard is twenty-two fifty, and the way that it works with the voucher is, the voucher contributes thirty percent of their income, the voucher covers up to the rest of the payment standard, the, the payment standard is the most that the Marin Housing Authority or the, the voucher will cover, so.
I can hear you.
He's speaking, sorry.
The whole system would be turned up, the whole minor.
Okay. I will speak louder, is that better?
Yeah.
So the question is, if, if at the end of a year's term lease, that the current market value, per the landlord's discretion, is up ten percent, and that the payment standard doesn't match that at a same percentage level, what's, where's the difference being made up? If that person's income is not changed to where thirty percent is not going to be enough to do that, where, who's making up that difference?
Sure. And just to clarify, as you described, so with the voucher, the way it works is that Marin Housing Authority or whatever issuing agency, they have a payment standard, so that's the max rent that they can cover. The recipient of the voucher pays a third of their income, so if they're making a thousand dollars a month, they pay three hundred and thirty dollars. If they're making a hundred dollars a month, they pay thirty dollars, and then the Housing Authority covers the rest up to the payment standard. So to your question, if a unit, for example, let's, let's take the one-bedroom, which is twenty-two fifty, if, let's say, a unit was renting for twenty-three hundred initially, the voucher could not meet that payment standard, and the landlord would not be forced to lower the rent just to accommodate the voucher. If the rent increased over time beyond the payment standard, that's beyond the scope of what this is covering, that would be something more akin to just cause or something beyond that. But my understanding right now is that the Housing Authority actively tries to work with all their landlords so that it doesn't rise above an unreasonable amount. If it did, it might, but this would not in any way constrain a landlord from raising the rent.
Thank you.
I think I have a question. Thank you for that great staff report, and I was especially pleased to see the reference to Color of Law, which we've all read, and if you haven't read it out there, you can get it from the library. It's a fascinating read about the history around land, around housing policies in the United States. So thank you for that. If you could also speak to the landlord program, I know that in San Anselmo, there were some questions about if there was any sort of damage to the unit or things like that, so maybe you could speak to what the county has in place about that.
Sure. So about two years ago, the County of Marin and the Marin Housing Authority undertook a pretty ambitious effort to try to, in addition to protections like this, actually The recipient of the voucher pays a third of their income. So if they're making a thousand dollars a month, they pay three hundred and thirty dollars. If they're making a hundred dollars a month, they pay thirty dollars. And then the Housing Authority covers the rest up to the payment standard. So to your question, if a unit, for example, let's take the one-bedroom, which is twenty-two fifty, if, let's say, a unit was renting for twenty-three hundred initially, the voucher could not meet that payment standard, and the landlord would not be forced to lower the rent just to accommodate the voucher. If the rent increased over time beyond the payment standard, that's beyond the scope of what this is covering, that would be something more akin to just cause or something beyond that. But my understanding right now is that the Housing Authority actively tries to work with all their landlords so that it doesn't rise above an unreasonable amount. If it did, it might, but this would not in any way constrain a landlord from raising the rent.
Thank you. Okay?
I have a question. Thank you for that great staff report. And I was especially pleased to see the reference to Color of Law, which we've all read. And if you haven't read it out there, you can get it from the library. It's a fascinating read about the history around land, around housing policies in the United States. So thank you for that. If you could also speak to the landlord program, I know that in San Anselmo, there were some questions about if there was any sort of damage to the unit or things like that. So maybe you could speak to what the county has in place about that.
Sure. So about two years ago, the County Marin and the Marin Housing Authority undertook a pretty ambitious effort to try to, in addition to protections like this, actually recruit more landlords. So some of the things that they've been doing, they've created a twenty-four-seven helpline. So if a landlord has an issue with a tenant, they can call in and get some assistance. They also have a damage fund, so that if there's excessive damage beyond the security deposit, that fund could also be utilized to address any sort of issues. And again, these are benefits that a landlord would not receive from renting to someone on the private market. So they're actually pretty great incentives. So those have been some of the things that have gone on. They've also added dedicated staff. So just a brief story. So before this program, the most number of apartment units that I ever saw anyone recruit in one year was probably about thirty-five. In the first year of this program, they recruited over, I think it was ninety, units with this mix of incentives and with this mix of staff. The staff is actually a former property manager, so she speaks the language of what property managers and landlords need and want. So it's been a really positive way to both have this in place, but also have a really positive relationship on the front end.
Andrew?
Andrew, your presentation at our first meeting on this subject was quite extensive. So rather than, I don't have any questions about the substance, but I do want to thank you for the work that you've done since in responding to the concerns that were raised at that hearing, and in particular, looking at the potential impact that our adoption of this ordinance might have on the new stream of housing consisting of the ADUs and JDUs. And it's gratifying to see that there should be no impact if the survey you did is a representation of the likely responses from future homeowners and developers of these units. So thank you for looking into this.
Yeah, of course.
Andrew's question really...
Yes, sure.
And just quickly, so you know, the public microphone, Kate's and mine are not, has been able to tune up on the speakers out there, so we'll have to speak louder than Andrew and the mayor. So we'll try our best.
He's just such an acroaide.
Yes, exactly. Shrinking violet. To Andrew's point there on the surveys that we done, that we did, was the question asked of the folks that were indifferent or unlikely to affect, I would be more interested on the ones that said it would impact, what percentage of those were planning on renting this other than to other family members, than to other family members, than not family members? So that, you know, where we say it's resoundingly that it wouldn't have had an effect, but of that percentage, were all of those, were most of those people going to put their own family member in this, so this wasn't going to impact them? And the ones that didn't respond or responded in another way, that they would be impacted by that? So if someone's, I guess the gist of my question is, if someone's going to build a JDU or an accessory dwelling unit for the specific purpose of renting it, did we ask that question to see if they would be impacted, or they would not pursue that if they had this put in place?
It's a good question. And we do have, I mean, the way that, we had about twelve questions, so there's actually more data just about the process in general that we could come back and present. We could parse that out and have that represented. I will say, just anecdotally, about half the responses were from email, half of them I had to call people. And in having those conversations, my impression was that of people that kind of responded that they were not happy about this type of ordinance, they thought that essentially the ordinance was saying that you have to take people with Section 8. And when I explained that actually, no, it's one of many criteria, it's trying to open the door to the conversation, they actually were more amenable to it. So I could get that, but that was my general impression, that people just felt like it was forcing their hand versus being something where we're just trying to help facilitate the initial conversation.
And again, I'd like to thank you for the follow-up, particularly with regard to Andrew's question at the last meeting. I thought it was pertinent, we make sure we accomplish what we had hoped and intended to. I do have a question, two actually. One, and I'm afraid many of you might not have this scheduled, but Exhibit A, we're in, it talks about, let's just take one, it doesn't matter, they're all following the same pattern, one-bedroom, let's call it twenty-five hundred as fair market value. So presumably, fair market value means that's what they could get in the open market for renting that one-bedroom unit. However, the payment standard is less than that, it's twenty-two fifty. So why, why would we think that anyone would be made, this unit would be made available to others than just regular conventional market?
Well, for this, it's an average. So I think when you look through Craigslist or you look through other rental sources, there's a distribution of different rents. So if I'm understanding your question correctly, there certainly, if you look at the average or the median rent, it's above the payment standard. MHA is always trying to negotiate up with HUD, which is the Housing and Urban Development Department nationally, to increase payment standards based on the rent. But what they do find is that there's still units based on the distribution that fall within the payment standard range. So it's really, for those limited units that are even affordable within the payment standard, some of which I had highlighted a minute ago, if people are still saying that they're not going to accept Section 8, then that creates an even bigger barrier.
Okay. Second, if you go back to your last slide.
Yeah.
Under enforcement, who makes the decision as to whether or not this is going to be enforced, the ordinance is going to be enforced in this manner?
Well, to date, again, mainly legal aid and fair housing advocates have been working with people if they've had issues. I, in preparation for this, in the last meeting, I've had conversations with executive directors from both, and they're both happy to basically help us take on that enforcement piece of it. If people do have issues and want to come to the city, then based on our internal conversations, people can talk to me, and I'm going to try to refer them back to legal aid and to fair housing advocates. But the primary, that's been the primary mechanism that people have been pursuing.
Okay. Public comment as regard to this item. Anyone? It's a race. Kiki, good evening.
Evening again, council. My name is Kiki Laporta. I live in Fairfax. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf, trying to talk loud. Apparently, it's not functional. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, Sustainable Marin, and Coalition for a Livable Marin, in addition to myself. And one answer to your question, Mayor, I have a junior unit. It has been a Section 8 rental for two years. I advertised it on the open market at a certain price, and I couldn't get a renter. I worked through Marin Housing, and I got a renter at a higher price than I was not able to get on the open market. The money goes in my account every month. My renter pays me the difference. It's a wonderful relationship. The protections that Marin Housing has put in place for landlords are spectacular. So that's a separate statement. This opportunity to pass this ordinance will eliminate rental discrimination against people relying on third-party sources of income, such as housing choice vouchers and veterans' benefits, which, of course, this discrimination is driving ethnic, racial, age, disability status, diversity out of San Rafael, hurting our culture, damaging our reputation, reducing economic activity for local businesses, and causing exhausting, expensive, and greenhouse gas-emitting commutes. Plus, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Freeman. I'm president of the Law Library Board of Trustees. Half of our four thousand patrons are self-represented. Of those, about a third come in for landlord-tenant issues. We run a legal clinic free twice a month, and that's where we see most of the folks come in. Their income is under two thousand, half of them, most of them are women, and unfortunately, probably a third to forty percent are retired. But I'm not speaking for the folks that I help out in that regard. I'm representing rich white people, because that's what I am. I'm a rich white person with a third-party income. And I rent because it costs less. And I want to extend gratitude towards the breadth of this particular ordinance, because it allows folks like us, who are beleaguered, to be able to rent very easily. So I'm very happy that you have an ordinance like this that has the breadth to include rich white folks like me. And also, obviously, of course, it helps those folks that we see regularly over at the Law Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pat Langley, a longtime San Rafael resident and a member of the Marin Organizing Committee. We are advocating across Marin for the implementation of ordinances to protect renters from the stark inequities in the current housing market in this county. Tonight, you're considering an ordinance to prohibit discrimination against renters whose income comes from a third-party rental assistance program. These housing vouchers represent a chance for ordinary individuals and families to live in areas with greater economic and educational opportunities. MOC recognizes that there are many ethical and good landlords, and that they deserve a fair return on their investment. This kind of ordinance does not impede a property owner's ability to rent their property to a tenant of their choosing. It just stops them from discriminating against people who rely on a voucher to help them pay for their homes. In addition, we ask you to actively pursue implementation of what MOC considers the three-legged stool of renter protections: enhanced code enforcement, mandatory mediation, and just cause eviction. Marin County has already implemented the mandatory mediation, and there's a discussion at the Board of Supervisors tomorrow about just cause eviction. We believe that effective protection will only be afforded to renters throughout the county by implementing these programs in all the cities and towns. We believe that San Rafael has responsibility to protect the rights of all its citizens, not just property owners. Thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and members of the San Rafael City Council. I'm Judy Binsaka. I chair the Transportation, Land Use Housing Committee of the League of Women Voters of Marin County. The League has long supported affordable housing, which we now also refer to as essential or workforce housing in Marin County here. The lack of such housing because of steadily increasing rental costs, sometimes unexpectedly large, for current tenants or those who must now commute to their Marin jobs, has been a major growing concern, as we all know only too well. And now we are faced with a growing group who needs support, those who are being denied tenancy based on their source of income, in particular, Section 8 vouchers. The League is here tonight to ask your support for an income-based rental housing discrimination ordinance to protect the people who wait many years to get these vouchers. Every year, more than one hundred voucher holders are unable to find a Marin landlord willing to accept vouchers, thus losing their opportunity to find housing here. Some landlords, as we've seen, even advertise they don't accept Section 8 voucher holders. Not only would such an ordinance reduce the traffic from workers who must commute to work in Marin, but would have a positive impact on their families, who would be together much more often, living a more normal life. Marin County passed an ordinance banning discrimination against Section 8 voucher holders in 2017. This year, Fairfax, Nevada, and just last week, San Anselmo, passed such ordinances. Now it's time for San Rafael to join their efforts, encouraging Marin's other cities and towns to do so as well. We ask you to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jerry Boletta, representing Sustainable San Rafael. I'm not going to go over all the arguments that you've already heard, which all make a good deal of common sense, and I will trust that you will take them into account, and want you to know that Sustainable San Rafael strongly advocates for this position. Thank you.
And thanks, sir. Anyone else? See, no one. We'll close and thank you for your comments. In return, for further comment and a motion with regard to this item. Comments?
Just quick comments.
Yes, please.
Just a question, I'm sorry. Have there been any stakeholder groups, landlord or property management groups, who have weighed in against the implementation of this ordinance, either in this jurisdiction or elsewhere in Marin?
I can't speak for the rest of Marin, but at least here, that has not been the case. We did receive a correspondence from, I'm going to, I can't remember the exact name, but I think it was the Marin Landlords Association, and they simply asked to be on our distribution list for announcing this meeting and anything pertaining to this. So that's been it.
Okay. I'll just have one quick comment, and that is, for me, this is slam dunk, and you'll see what my vote is. But I need to comment with regard to something that came to my attention not too long ago. Folks up here know this. San Francisco Magazine recently rated the top one-hundred-and-one cities in the Bay Area. And guess who came out number one with regard to diversity? San Rafael. Came out ninth throughout the one-hundred-and-one cities. So sometimes we sort of take it, but we may not fully realize where we stand with regard to some of the issues that are important to many, if not all of us. So with that, a motion would be appropriate.
I would be delighted to make a motion that we pass the ordinance to print.
I would like to second that motion. And ordinarily, I would suggest a rider that would create a carve-out for the Jonathan Freemans of the world, but I'm going to resist the temptation to do so and simply second the motion as made.
I think it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at her curious four-zero. Next, excuse me, we'll turn to item number seven, other agenda items, specifically A, small cell 5G wireless communication technology. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips. Good evening, council members. For the past five or six months, the council has been hearing various public comments regarding some new legislation from the FCC related to small cell technology, otherwise known as 5G. The FCC is a federal entity that is in, that governs telecommunications. The FCC has been considering new rules related to the small cell technology, and in September of this year, they did pass a new ruling, which becomes effective on January 15th of 2019, so just about, just over a month from now. What that ruling will do is it will, it does place limits on local agencies permitting and discretion on the small cell technology, establishes shot clock rules, and by that I mean mandates certain actions that have to be done within a timeframe, a certain timeframe, which we'll talk about in a little bit, limits the fees that can be charged by a local agency in reviewing and processing those applications. What it does not do is it does not change their original 1996 ruling of the Telecommunication Acts, which limits the local government's ability to regulate the placement or modification of wireless facilities due to RF emissions. So a few months ago, staff was asked to look into this, evaluate our current ordinance, understand the FCC rules, and report back. So we have been doing that. During this time, we've also met with the advocacy group, that EMF, who has the EMF Safety Network on three different occasions to understand their position, and their comments were included in your staff report. As I noted, during this time that we started our research, the FCC ruling did actually go into effect on September 15th. So we got a little bit more clarity once those specific rules went into place. And what we did find was, although we thought we had a strong ordinance before the ruling that would regulate small cell technology, once the ruling went in, it became clear that we do need to modify our ordinance to comply with the limitations that have been placed upon local entities related to small cell. So we do need to update our ordinance and create a process with some standards on how those will be addressed. So we're here tonight to report back to you on what we found so far. We'll have a, we'll present a background on the FCC regulations from an attorney who is helping us understand these complex set of regulations. We'll report out on what other communities have done and are doing, and explain what options we've looked at. And what we've done is we've presented a draft ordinance and resolution for you, if that's something you want us to pursue to come back as an urgency item at the next meeting. So with that, I am pleased to present Michael Johnson, who's an attorney... So with that, I am pleased to present Michael Johnson, who's an attorney with Telecom Law Firm, who's one of the leading experts in helping local governments understand the FCC rules and telecommunications, and then he'll give a background on the legal research. And then Alicia Judice, who is a senior planner here with the city, will talk to you a little bit about our research, what we've done, and so forth, so.
Before your comment, welcome. I just want to compliment you and all the staff that has worked on this report. I couldn't help but make a copy so I can keep it. It's that thick. That's both sides of the paper. I think this is outstanding report that has been made. So, first, I want to thank you and said all those involved in providing this.
Thank you. It was a real team effort with people from across multiple departments and...
No doubt. But convey my, our appreciation, if you would, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Johnston. I'm an attorney at Telecom Law Firm. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Good evening, Michael.
It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
You can take it out.
There you go.
Better? Work better?
There you go.
Now I feel like a musician or an artist or something. Okay, well, my role here tonight is primarily an informational one. We're trying to give you the, we're trying to give you guys the background...
Tough crowd, Michael, sorry.
The regulatory background, the legal framework that limits and governs the city's authority to regulate wireless infrastructure within its territorial bounds. In about a month ago, two months ago, September, at the end of September, the FCC adopted, officially adopted its small cell order. That adopts new rules that kind of change the landscape that we're planning with. This order is going to go into effect on January 14th, 2019, and what it does is it creates a new regulatory classification for small wireless facilities, small cells. It basically tells us that we have to treat them subject to different standards and different In a more nitty-gritty sense, it takes away this distinction we used to have as local governments. We carry two authorities: one is a regulator, and one is a proprietor, an owner of property. This order diminishes that, that distinction pretty resoundly. It says, when you're operating in the right-of-way, the city is only a regulator. It's not a proprietor. It doesn't own the streetlights in that sense. It doesn't own the traffic signals in that sense. It only regulates the installations with respect to them. It can't say no as a landlord on that, on that type of property. The other major thing that the small cell order does is it creates new shot clocks, much shorter shot clocks that the city is required to comply with. It changes the timeframe from which the city had to act, from 150 days for any new installation down to 60 days for an attachment to an existing structure, 90 days for an attachment to a brand-new structure. As I mentioned before, it's going to go into effect January 14th, so the goal here is to find some set of rules that we can comply with the order in the meantime. Alternatively, and concurrently, there are challenges to these rules that are being waged by local governments and the industry itself, actually. Our firm does represent a coalition of municipal leagues that is challenging the order. We have filed requests for stay of that order to make sure the rules do not go into effect on January 14th. That motion has not been acted on by the FCC, and it is unclear whether there's going to be one acted on by the federal court from which we're litigating. The appeals are expected to last 12 to 18 months, so in that meantime, if we are still subject to these rules without any sort of stay, there has to be an effort for compliance in the interim. So what is a small wireless facility? I apologize for that typo. This is the full rule for what qualifies. It's rather large. It's not exactly what you would expect small to mean, so if it's mounted on a structure that's 50 feet or less, 50 feet tall or less, that's a small wireless facility. If it has accessory equipment, so anything but the antenna, the radios, the power distribution, the fiber distribution, that equipment can go up to 28 cubic feet, right? 28 cubic feet. The antenna itself can be three cubic feet. And this is a nice illustration of our FCC chairman, Ajit Pai, telling his common refrain that small cells are the size of a pizza box, right? They're the size of a pizza box. Well, 28 cubic feet is about the size of a commercial refrigerator, right? That is, in that picture on the left is my boss, Jonathan, Dr. Jonathan Kramer. He sends his regards. He couldn't make it tonight, but he, no one would ever characterize him as a small man. He's about six feet tall, and that, and he fits well within that 28-cubic-foot PVC pipe framing, so that's how much accessory equipment could be permitted under this classification. What does it look like in the field? Well, that stuff on the ground, those are equipment cabinets, and that is larger than 28 cubic feet. That is larger than 28 cubic feet, but a couple of them put together make up that difference. So that's, those are the size limitations that we're dealing with under this rule. This is another installation in the city of Beverly Hills. It's, what we're looking at right now is in the foreground, that equipment cabinet. Does that meet the 28-cubic-foot limitation? Well, of course it does. It's actually six feet less, so that is the size in scale, right, of what would qualify as a small wireless facility. Not to mention, right, that there, that the antennas are not counted in this 28-cubic-foot limit. You get individual three-cubic-foot antennas that would be subject to this new rule. There's no cumulative limit to the number of antennas that they, that can be deployed subject to this rule. They're not counted in that 20-foot, 28-cubic-foot limitation, and if you look at it in comparison to what's actually deployed in the field, a six-foot-tall panel antenna generally meets that volumetric limitation. So what does the rule do? What does the FCC order do with respect to these, to our existing authority, right? It establishes a new general rule for what an effective prohibition of personal wireless services is. In the past, we had dealt with this test about significant gap in least intrusive means, right? That does not exist anymore under this rule. It is now subject to this new general rule, which says if any regulation or local legal requirement materially limits or inhibits the competitor or any potential competitor's ability to compete in a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment, that rule of regulation is preempted by federal law. What does that actually mean in context? Well, the FCC gives us two subtests. One is with respect to fees, whether a fee would cause an effective prohibition. The second is respect to non-fee requirements, aesthetic regulations, and whatnot. I'll stay off the fees for the time being, because I think the thing we're mostly concerned with tonight is how to regulate the aesthetics of that equipment, and the test that they give us is, is... So for any regulation, any non-fee regulation, this is the test. For example, example being aesthetics. It has to be a reasonable regulation. Reasonable is defined as, is it technically feasible, and is it legitimately related to mitigating some sort of out-of-sightly deployment? Is the regulation no more burdensome than those imposed on similar types of infrastructure deployments? Not really clear what that means in this context. And is the rule objective and published in advance? It's fairly straightforward, and what this resolution before you tonight for recommendation is intended to comply, to shift subjective requirements to objective ones. Our new shot clock rules, right? 60 days, 90 days, 150. 60 is for any attachment to an existing structure. It totally warps the definition of what a co-location used to mean. Co-locations were bringing multiple facilities to one single structure. You have an existing carrier, you're bringing a second. Now, it just means any attachment to an above-ground structure. 90-day shot clocks for any new small cell facility, that's essentially a new structure in the right-of-way, so it's not an existing utility pole, streetlight, it's, they're propping up a brand-new one. And then 150, 150 days for everything else, which essentially amounts to brand-new, freestanding, large macro wireless facilities, monopines, the big pine trees and stuff like that. One of the really key changes in these rules is how broadly it applies to the processes local governments use to process applications. Prior to the FCC order, the shot clock applied to what we thought was just the first action, right? The planning commission or the administrative action to approve or deny a wireless site. Not so fast anymore, right? It applies to everything: appeals processes, any public hearing, potentially the negotiation for a pole license to attach to an existing pole in the right-of-way. All of those actions fall under that 60- or 90-day shot clock, right? No longer 150, 60 or 90 days. The rules also allow for batched applications, which essentially allows carriers to submit applications for more than one facility at a time in the same set of applications. This is kind of an in-the-weeds topic on resetting the shot clock, but I don't think it's necessarily relevant for our purposes here. What about undergrounding requirements? Can we still require undergrounding as an aesthetic consideration? The rules are not clear, do not clearly prohibit, so it preserves our authority to do that in certain circumstances. We're also subject to some state rules that affect whether or not we can require undergrounding in certain instances. Can you put restrictions on residential areas? Again, silent with respect to that, so there are maneuvers you can take to at least allow carriers to explore alternatives prior to citing on residential locations. Can you put a restriction on a decorative pole, right? Downtown historic district, you know, acorn ornamental lights? Can you restrict access to those poles? I think the answer is yes. Nothing clear in the order that says you can't. Residents who want public hearings and appeals, can you still provide them? The answer is yes, but is it feasible to do so? The rules do not restrict local governments from having public hearings and appeals. Compliance with the shot clock is the difficult aspect here, and what the FCC has effectively done is that it's shortened the shot clocks to a point where it makes public processes infeasible. It's a real strategy, right, on their part. What about existing small cell agreements? In this context, I'm talking about attachment agreements to the city-owned infrastructure, streetlights, traffic signals, other poles that they own. Not necessarily relevant for our purposes here, but yes, we can still require agreements for those, for those deployments. Did the FCC adopt a deemed granted remedy if you fail to violate a shot clock? This is in context of what happens when the government doesn't act within that 60- or 90-day timeframe? What happens? Well, in California, there was a, there's a state bill that says you have to, it's automatically deemed approved. That application is deemed approved if you miss the deadline. The FCC has not taken that approach. It could not find the statutory authority to do so, so what it does is it provides an expedited appeal process and basically shifts the presumption of proving the case from the applicant to the local government, so it stacks the balance against the local government in that instance. Can you require moratoria? Can you say no applications for a certain period of time? The FCC has made this abundantly clear. It is flatly illegal to adopt any sort of moratoria whatsoever, whether illegal or And I'll pass that off to Ally.
See, Quinn?
Okay.
I think it's up to, if the council wants to ask questions now, that's probably appropriate.
And let's...
And then we can continue with our presentation after that.
Okay, let's do so, John.
I just have, I just have one, you know, specific to, it doesn't matter which slide it was, in terms of the definition of the small cell and what comprises that. And I don't know the mechanics of that. When you show the box and the 28 cubic feet for that box, does each small cell require its own service box, or will a service box be able to service 10 poles? You know, or is every pole gonna have a 28 cubic square foot, whatever, box?
I may have done a poor job explaining. The size limitations do not necessarily mean that the city has to approve any installation that meets those volumetric limitations. It just shifts the applicable rules from what we used to work with to the ones that the FCC has adopted here. But will every installation require that size of equipment? The answer is no. Will every installation require its own equipment? The answer is yes.
So that was the gist of my question. There has to be, it's not like one piece can service six or seven poles.
Imagine the equipment inside that box as being the individual radios that process the signals to the antenna and vice versa, back to the core internet network. Each facility needs its own radios. Each carrier needs its own radios. Even if you have what's called a neutral host facility that carries the signals of multiple carriers, each carrier still needs its own equipment, radios, you know, transmitting that signal to the antenna to then propagate to the end user.
So, so just as a quick follow-up, so if you have Verizon, ATT, T-Mobile, and they're all on one pole, they would all require their own box to service their own...
Essentially, yes, but, but it's very unlikely that each carrier will co-locate on the same pole. The structural stability of the pole is obviously an issue, and having four carriers' equipment on one pole is not really that feasible. Also, they don't like to share. They like to be at the top, and rather than, than at the bottom of the pole, right? Where all the antenna's gonna go, it's a question of who's first, really.
Okay. And just to expand on it, if I could, because I'm not quite clear yet. Let's say you've got 10 poles and therefore transmitters. Does that mean you're gonna have 10 boxes, or does that mean you're gonna have more or less than 10?
It's very likely you will have 10 boxes. Not necessarily 28-cubic-foot boxes. They can be somewhere between four, five cubic feet to reasonably fit the radio equipment, fiber power distribution, disconnect switches that shut the power off from the facility. It's, the policy in the resolution before you tonight is not going to permit 28-cubic-foot boxes for each and every installation.
Thank you. Kate?
Thank you for being here this evening. My question is, what is a consequence of an FCC violation? You talked both in terms of an ordinance that maybe goes against what they're saying can be done, and as well as a shot clock. So what are the consequences of that?
So, each permit application before the city essentially becomes its own cause of action for the applicant if the city denies the application. It opens the potential for the applicant to say that that permit denial causes an effective prohibition of my services. So that authorizes, once a permit denial occurs, it authorizes the carrier to sue the city within 30 days. If they sue the city within 30 days, then the, you know, the lawsuit goes forward. You litigate, you potentially settle or see it to litigation. It's, you know, a matter of choice. If the applicant does not sue within that 30 days, their claim is time-barred, so it can't pursue. A violation of the shot clock automatically becomes a presumptive effective prohibition. So, the carrier would walk into court and say, local government X violated the 60-day shot clock. They have presumptively caused an effective prohibition. That's my cause of action. Unless the local government can prove that it was not unreasonable to violate that shot clock, carrier wins. Here's an injunction, shovel-ready permits, you're ready to go. That's the instruction the FCC has given in the order.
And so have you seen in current installations what you just described? So, not with 5G, but currently, the way the system works now?
Absolutely.
So...
I've, yes, I've seen numerous accounts of carriers getting permits denied and then suing. It's not, it's not necessarily a question of, does it happen in every instance? No, of course not. There are always going, they're not always, there's often legitimate reasons to deny a permit for a site. It doesn't meet the aesthetic standards. They have, the carrier applicant hasn't, you know, gone through the collaborative process of working with staff to get, you know, what was before considered the least intrusive means, now a little different under this test, but yes, carriers routinely sue on permit denials and routinely sue on shot clock violations.
Thank you. And since we're talking about the legal aspect of this, and you touched on this in terms of the lawsuits that are being brought, and I spoke today with our representative of the League of California Cities, just to get more background on the lawsuits, and of course, the League of California Cities has brought a lawsuit.
With their council.
Right. So if you could maybe just speak to that, and it's not just in California, as I understand it, it's happening throughout the United States.
Exactly.
Yeah.
There are currently, I'm sorry, very sorry. There are currently five petitions for review on, brought on behalf of various coalitions of local governments. The city of New York is involved, city of Chicago is involved, Ann Arbor, Michigan, cities up and down the state of California are involved. We represent the League of California Cities, Oregon Cities, and Arizona Cities and Towns, in addition to the city of Seattle, city of Tacoma. This is a nationwide response to the FCC's order. There is a strong sentiment among... There's a strong sentiment among those local government petitioners that the FCC indeed exercised authority it did not have in this instance. It interpreted the statute, the effective prohibition language, in a way that's not compatible with what the law says.
So, in your opinion, is it a good thing to have more cities lining up as part of that lawsuit?
I don't know if this is the appropriate forum for me to comment on that.
Okay.
I...
Okay.
Thank you.
No, great, yeah, sorry. You were done, right? Yeah. I've got a few questions, but I'd like to start where, sort of where my colleague left off, and that is on the penalties in the event of a violation. So you mentioned that the carriers, if, for example, we violate the shot clock, or it's deemed violated, then they're entitled to an injunction. Are there circumstances where they might be entitled to monetary penalties? In other words, would we go out of pocket apart from our attorney's fees in opposing actions that they file based upon violations of the FCC orders?
That's a, that's a great question, and the answer is no. You will not be liable for the petitioners, the plaintiff's attorney's fees. It's not a 1983 action. There's a separate private right of action under this statute such that attorney's fees are not provided. There was litigated in a case before the Supreme Court in 2005 called Abrams v. Rancho Palos Fuerzas.
So, for example, if we imposed a moratorium right now, knowing that it's clearly in violation of the law, and we did not put in place this urgency ordinance or any other provision to address 5G, then presumably the moratorium would have to be overturned in court. We wouldn't face any consequence other than an order requiring us to overturn it, at which point we could come back and fashion whatever response we needed to.
Let me just interrupt for a minute, and we appreciate the enthusiasm, but we're going to have a long evening, and the interruption is just going to extend it, so I would ask that there not be applause with regard to each comment.
It's, it's an interesting idea. Unfortunately, the FCC rules require that the shot clock runs through any moratorium. So if an application is submitted and the city says, "No, I'm not accepting that application," the rule says any time an application is proffered, so an attempt to submit an application, shot clock starts. City pushes it back, 60 days elapses, you walk into court, get your injunction, shovel-ready permits, with or without a moratorium.
Another question that the lawyer appreciates, the lawyer and me appreciates, and that is, we're being asked to consider an urgency ordinance tonight, or to consider it for December 17th, our next meeting. And an urgency ordinance, just in general terms, simply means that we adopt it kind of on a fast-track basis so that it's in place come January 14th. Is, to your mind, is there any reason we need to have an ordinance in place by January 14th? In other words, are there negative consequences to not having it in place, assuming there are no 5G applications pending or will be made at any point in the foreseeable future?
Even if there are no 5G applications pending, this technology functions on 4G LTE networks. So the initial deployment of these small cells actually was for 4G, and I don't know for certain if San Rafael has small cells deployed in its city boundaries right now, but the answer is, do you need rules in place? The reason we want the rules in place when the order, when the order takes effect is that in the event that an application is submitted, that there is a framework that is compliant with the rules, at least to some degree, that would allow to shuttle, that would shuttle these projects through a reasonable framework. If it, if the projects are shuttled under the existing framework, there are currently required findings for a use permit that are subjective and would be preempted by federal law. There are different regulations that require, say, you know, compatibility with the surrounding area. It's a subjective requirement, it's preempted by federal law. And so those requirements that are found in the existing code are just not well-equipped to respond to the change in law that occurred here.
I understand that. I guess what I'm getting at is, do we face a consistency or objectivity challenge if we adopt an ordinance after January 14th as we see applications on the horizon? In other words, is it better to adopt it now so that we can say that we've acted in as neutral a fashion as possible before we see applications come our way?
It's, it's not necessary to have one in place. It's not necessary to have one in place if there are no applications pending. However, I would expect that come January 14th, that applications will be submitted. We can't dictate when applicants decide to come forward with a small cell deployment. I'm not, I don't have a ton of insight as to whether applicants have already made those overtures to the city, but in the event that an application does come through the door, it has to have a framework in place for it to be processed.
Okay. And then, a little bit in the weeds, and I think this is my last question at the moment. You showed a picture, we're talking about, the significance here, of course, is that we're losing control over our public right-of-way. You showed a picture of one of the installation, the boxes, utility boxes, that was adjacent to a sidewalk. So that's in Beverly Hills, I assume, and I don't know exactly where their right-of-way is, but we're all familiar here in San Rafael with how our right-of-way operates in different neighborhoods. So if we have, for example, a central median running down an arterial, we know that that's a right-of-way, because there are utility poles in it, and we can envision there being on those poles, the antenna, but the peripheral equipment in the boxes, if that has to be placed in the right-of-way and there's no place within the median, can they go to the sidewalk even if it impedes access along the sidewalk for pedestrian travel, for example?
Impeding access to the extent that it causes some sort of violation with ADA or other generally applicable, impeding access to the right-of-way, to the extent that it causes a violation of either ADA rules or some other generally applicable public health and safety rules, you can deny that equipment, yes. The authority of the city is preserved in that respect to enforce those types of safety compliance laws, yes.
Well, what about planted median strips like we're seeing there? I'm assuming that we have to sacrifice our landscaping for the sake of the utility box?
Not necessarily. So there's alternatives to ground-mounted equipment, and it's pole-mounted equipment. So some of the equipment could be on the pole. Some of it, if you have underground utility districts, could be placed underground potentially.
I'm sorry, I do have another question. It's more procedural, and I'm going to address it to you, but I might ask our city attorney to give it some consideration as well. Given what we anticipate to be the sentiment coming from the people assembled here this evening, and we know that because we've received quite a few emails on the subject, so I can envision what we're going to hear, there's going to be commentary about the health effects of, or the potential health effects of 5G. Are we allowed to consider those comments, that is specifically as it relates to potential health effects, as we consider whether or not to pass an urgency ordinance that responds to the FCC order?
You're able to consider any comments, you're able to consider any comments before the public record, on the public record, but to the extent that a decision is made on the basis of the health effects of radio frequency, if those radio frequency emissions would be compliant with the FCC's rules, those comments cannot be the basis for a decision. Or if they are, you could be subject as to litigation. Those are simply the facts.
So may I?
No more.
May I make a rhetorical comment then?
Of course.
Or a rhetorical question, and that is, given what we anticipate to be the sentiment this evening, and it's not a sentiment that is dissimilar from perhaps those of policymakers in the community, it may be a better use of our time to focus really on some of the issues that this attorney has shared with us this evening, and to focus a little less on the health consequences because we're not able to consider them, and we have to explicitly incorporate that into our record if we do in fact pass an ordinance on December 17th.
As, as an anecdote, or just a data point, there have been cases decided, not with respect to, you know, an ordinance or a policy that you're being prepared to act on tonight, but in-
Hey, Michael, pretend you're Mick Jagger, like, write it like that.
Jagger.
Yeah.
But individual permit applications, when they do come, if the record is polluted with RF health hazard discussion, and it seemed as if the council or the review authority made a decision that was a pretext for RF, those decisions are overturned by courts relatively routinely.
And that's what I'm afraid of this evening. Thank you.
And-
One really quick question.
Yeah, John, please.
So, we talked about in, within the public right-of-way, we do have a lot of streets and neighborhoods that are privately maintained with light poles, associations are paying for the roads and the sidewalks. Are those, are the providers allowed to go into those neighborhoods as well when there are light poles and light standards, and put their equipment on those in private neighborhoods that are not city-maintained?
So the distinction is whether it's a, it's a public right-of-way. If it does qualify as a public right-of-way, typically those lands are, there's an easement running for it dedicated for public travel. That would, yes, be subject to these new rules, a facility deployed in those areas, yes.
So, again, if the neighborhood is fully functioning on its own, and they pave their streets, they do the sidewalks, and the city does not maintain any of those, and thus it's like a cul-de-sac that doesn't have any ins or outs, I'm just wondering, because we do have a lot of those in the city, that, would those be subject to it? Could those folks come in and say, "Hey, we want to get this neighborhood of 50 homes as well, so we're going to go ahead and put these things on these light poles," even though those are not within the city public right-of-way? Yeah, I mean, yes, the police come there, the fire department comes there, the postal service comes and delivers to these places, but they're privately maintained streets.
From my understanding of the rule, it would apply to those streets as well.
One more question, and then it's my turn.
I apologize, but you made a comment earlier that I meant to ask you about. You said you expect the effect of this FCC order to last 12 to 18 months. Can you explain what you meant by that?
Yeah, so I, we expect that the appeals, the appeals process to last 12 to 18 months. If the local government petitioners are successful and the order is overturned, then we would revert back to your standard rules. If the order is upheld, we'd be, you know, living with this as long as it's law.
Then if there's uncertainty out there, given the penancy of these appeals, why would you expect 5G applications to be made during this 12 to 18-month period?
The uncertainty is only with respect to if the order is going to be valid over those 12 to 18 months. Facilities deployed in the interim are not likely to come down unless they violate some sort of public health and safety issue.
I'll just comment, and then I have a couple of questions. I'll just comment that prior to this evening, we did establish a subcommittee to look at this issue for us, meetup of council members, Colin and, and, and Andrew here. So we appreciate the questions that have evolved from that perhaps and brought to our attention this evening, so thanks for doing so. I just have a couple of questions. Well, one, two of you, and then I'll give the city attorney a heads-up. First, with regard to residential, I've noticed that a couple of the other cities have made reference to a moratorium within residential, and I'm wondering if that, what's the outcome of that going to be? Does that have merit, or are they just making nice with the residents?
So there are a, there are a set of cities described in the staff report of adopting some sort of residential prohibition. The first three of those adopted ordinances within a timeframe before the FCC order was issued, so it didn't account for those new rules, and those new rules do not appear to provide any sort of solace for residential areas. The second two, I don't have any specific commentary with respect to whether those residential prohibitions, if they are indeed those residential prohibitions, if they're actually valid. Not the appropriate place to comment for that.
Except we have to make a decision this evening with regard to that issue, so it'd be helpful.
Yeah. On the legality of them, if you were going to run through that three-pronged test, is the regulation, is the prohibition in residential areas, is it reasonable? Is it no more burdensome than regulations imposed on similar infrastructure deployments? And is it objective and published in advance? I think you would have a very difficult time establishing that it's, A, reasonable, and B, no more burdensome than similar types of communications infrastructure regulations.
And second, I'd like to ask your opinion with regard to the shot clock?
Yes.
I'm curious as to whether or not that is arbitrary, or there is some rationale behind the time period specified.
That's a loaded question.
Sorry about that.
So what the FCC did, conveniently enough, was they scanned a set of statewide rules that were adopted for processing small cell applications leading up to this order, different states, and I don't know if you can recall, the state of California was considering a small cell bill. So the industry lobbied for these bills in these separate states. The FCC looked at the record and did a survey of states that had adopted these small cell bills and said, "It looks like 60 days is the, for some reason, is the number that makes sense." These were the timeframes that were adopted in these small cell bills, adopted by, or pushed by the industry, and that's where the 60 days. Is it arbitrary? I think for most planners, you would say yes, but it was vetted through state legislatures that decided this issue.
I understand it. Thank you very much. The question of the two of you, then, is the city attorney and yourself perhaps, is this. I too am concerned about the sentiment of many within our community as the health factor. Now, that leads me to the concern, which I would hope you'll help me with, and that is, if we do have comments this evening, I'm sitting here now with the impression to be changed, if appropriate, that it would be inappropriate for the community to comment with regard to the health issues. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I think, but I don't want to, I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot either with regard to this matter.
It is not inappropriate for residents of a community to voice their concerns about a city action.
Would it be inappropriate for us this evening, then, to do so?
It would be inappropriate for the council to take any action that, that took into account radio frequency admissions to the extent those admissions are compliant with FCC regulations. So can you consider that in your determination? You can consider that, but it cannot be a basis for your decision.
And I'd like to ask for my own confirmation, and before we get into the comments, to make sure we're in the right place. If this city attorney, citizen city attorney, agree with that position?
Yes, to restate, I mean, there's a lot of folks present that we've already heard through emails, and I think consistent with some of the vocalizations we've heard from the crowd tonight, that we can expect that there will be public comment that relates to health effects. And as Michael said, people have a right to petition their local government, they have a First Amendment right, they are entitled to speak about this issue and say what they think the city council should hear, what the community should hear, what the FCC should hear, et cetera. And the rather odd corollary is that once the public hearing is closed, whatever decision the council ultimately makes cannot be based on a public health consideration. Again, to echo Michael's words, and I can't quote the statute exactly, but if the implementation is consistent with the rules, then regardless of what claims might be regarding health impacts, that such claims cannot be a basis for council decision-making. So it's, it's an unfortunate irony, but it should certainly not chill any public comment tonight.
And thanks for the clarification. Hopefully that helps everyone. Any more questions? Then stand by.
I will do my best to write down questions I hear from the audience and the council as well to make sure I can respond.
And we appreciate, and certainly appreciate the help you've provided thus far. It's been really quite, quite, quite good.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Actually, we still have a little bit of staff presentation to conclude.
Okay, continue on, and then we'll go to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to be as loud as possible. So staff's presentation, I just wanted to start with, we do have an ordinance in place. You've heard Mr. Johnson, Johnston, and Rafi mention that our current ordinance does not go the length that it needs to, to address the recent FCC regulations, and so that's why we are bringing forward a recommendation for an urgency ordinance with some text amendments that would be made to our existing zoning code, and some policy resolution that would put forward some of the, all of the standards, regulations, and restrictions related to small wireless facilities. So the first component of the urgency ordinance, or the text amendments are, would be to define what a small wireless facility would be, and that would be amending Section 14.03.030 to address that a wireless, small wireless facility would need to meet height limitations, would also need to meet cubic volume limitations of three cubic feet per antenna, and volume limitations of 28 cubic feet for the associated equipment. The next amendment would be to add a completely new section of the code related specifically to small wireless communications facilities, and this would apply to small wireless facilities as they are defined as a unique type of installation. And the text amendment would, or the addition of the text would be very brief in that it would be a paragraph that would then refer to a policy resolution where the, where the standards would be located. And then the final element of the text amendments would be to amend Section 14.16.360, which is our existing wireless communications facilities, to recognize that, that small wireless facility- In terms of adoption of a policy resolution, the policy resolution would refer to our existing regulations in terms of an application submitted requirement and the requirement to provide a radio frequency report. As Mr. Johnson mentioned today, we wouldn't be able to impose additional standards with respect to radio frequency emissions, but it would be outlining a requirement that the report would show that the carriers are in compliance with the FCC regulations. The other element of that resolution would be that we would recognize the establishment of a shot clock, 60 days for co-location, 90 days for new installation. And then we would have a tiered approach at installation, location preferences, with the preferred location being commercial, industrial, public, and public quasi-public. A less preferred locations would be within major and minor arterials in residential areas, and the least preferred location where we would be discouraging placement would be in other residential areas. So, those would be, should be avoided. Then the other requirement in the policy resolution would be to impose separation requirements. The separation requirements would not apply to existing poles, so if a co-location within an existing pole that met certain stealth criteria, there would be no separation requirements. Installation of a new pole or one that did not meet our stealth theme requirements would have at least a minimum of 300 feet of separation requirements between poles. There would also be a tiered review process. For co-locations, we would propose a ministerial review. We would basically be looking at compliance with our, with our adopted regulations, assuring that they've met those standards. New poles would be required to go through an administrative design review process, and poles located within the least preferred locations would also be required to go through administrative design review process. Our administrative review process does not provide opportunity for public notification. In addition, as Mr. Johnston mentioned tonight, because of our really tight timelines for processing, there would be no, it would be difficult to provide the opportunity for public notification as well as allow for appeals process, and so we are not recommending changes to that. The policy resolution would also impose height limits. A minimum height of 10 feet from sidewalk is included in the policy resolution that we provided you. We've also identified a maximum height of five feet above existing pole. However, there are some specific nuances to that in that our utility poles may need to have an additional height of six feet above any existing component of the utility, and then the antenna would go above that. So, there's going to be a need to amend that to comply with public utility commissions and utility requirements. The appeals process that we've identified is intended to address the fact that we have a limited timeline for processing, and so we're recommending that appeals be directed straight to the city council. There were some standards that we considered, but were not recommended. One of those were to prohibit in residential areas, and one of the reasons was that we were told that we were, directed that prohibiting in residential areas could be considered prohibitive in nature, and so, so we did not recommend that, but we did outline a preference, tiering of preference of locations. We did look at potentially requiring a setback from residential structures. This is something that we were also advised against because of, city staff was advised against, city, city staff was advised against imposing a setback.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, please be attentive to the staff report, and if there are questions during the public hearing time, you're welcome to ask them, but please pay attention, as we're trying to, to the staff report. Thank you. We is the staff. We, sir, I'm trying to tell you that we represents the staff that are making the report, and if you would listen to them, you would hear the report, which we're trying to do. Staff of the city. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, I am a city employee with the City of San Rafael Planning Department, trying to prepare a report to the city council. And then going back, we were advised that setbacks from residential structures could be considered prohibitive, so we did not recommend that as well. We were asked to look at more, more strict separation requirements between the antenna facilities, and we could not find a correlation between the, the distance that was proposed, which was 1,500 to 3,000 feet, and having that be kind of an aesthetic standard, so that's why we proposed the 300 foot instead. Another thing that we did not, we looked at, but we're, are not recommending are, is a discretionary review process. As I mentioned before, our strict timelines would make it very difficult to go through a discretionary review process and be able to process that within the timelines that the FCC has outlined for us. We looked at requiring an alternate sites analysis, but we were informed that that would also be difficult as the carrier, that would put the burden of proof on the carriers versus the burden of proof on the city, which is what we're obligated to do. So, that pretty much concludes my report. The city's looking for direction from your council. We have outlined some options for you. One is to direct staff to prepare, prepare an urgency ordinance with the proposed text that we have and some of the changes that I mentioned tonight. Another option would be to direct staff to prepare an urgency ordinance with modifications to the proposed text. Another option would be to direct staff to continue to research this and come back, come back at a future date, and then the final action would, the final option would be to take no action.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Anyone?
Okay. I'm sure I'm going to be asking some questions that some of you might want to ask, so bear with me. It'll hopefully be helpful in our discussion. So, thank you for the staff report and for including what other local jurisdictions have done. I'm curious, because in the ones that, maybe you go back to the ones that we are not being proposed, I know from the staff report, and we can go through these, prohibit residential, and yet we have local jurisdictions that are doing that. They also have included 1,500 feet separation requirements, and the City of San Anselmo is requiring a community meeting, some sort of public hearing. So, when I look at those, those look like things, if they're doing it, I would like us to consider it too, and maybe you could speak to that, you know, knowing what other jurisdictions. And I do understand that FCC has had additional rulings, but this is where our fellow jurisdictions or adjacent ones are right now.
That's right. I think, just going back to what Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, that is that many of these jurisdictions adopted their regulations prior to the FCC rulings, which really kind of honed in on what they were, what jurisdictions could do. I know at least one jurisdiction who is kind of waiting to see what happens. There's a lawsuit, as you mentioned earlier, there's a lawsuit in place, and they're just, they're going to wait to see what happens with that lawsuit to decide how to proceed. So, I don't know if that answers your question, that's...
It does, and what I also hear from both Mr. Johnson and you is that there is ambiguity around this. We won't really know until January, and it seems to me that some jurisdictions, in spite of that ambiguity, are making a statement for their community. So, anyway, just a comment.
Andrew, yeah? Yeah, Andrew. I guess along those lines, and maybe this is a question that Mr. Johnston can consider and when he comes back in response to whether it's our questions, the public questions, or a combination, is it similar to, if we, if we were to impose a ban on the introduction of small cell installations in residential areas, would it be like instituting a moratorium? In other words, a shot clock, shot clock would run notwithstanding that ban, and we would find ourselves in a position, assuming the ban is overturned, that we have a number of applications deemed approved, and we've missed whatever normal procedure we would have to review that application because we thought that the ban was in effect, and in fact it wasn't, or it was overturned later. So, I'd like to hear the answer to that. I was very interested in the detail that was provided in the staff report, which we read, of course, on what Sacramento is doing. Now, some might feel that what they're doing is more sort of cooperative with the carriers, but leaving aside the cooperative aspect to it, they have, they've, they seem to have invested a lot of time, consultant time and staff time and energy in coming up with very, very specific standards on what will be permitted, and these standards, again, meet the reasonableness and objectivity stand, requirements, such that they're going to have installations that will be consistent throughout their community. And what we're proposing right now by way of potentially an urgency ordinance wouldn't have that level of detail. Are you suggesting that we might, as time passes, consider augmenting our ordinance in this area so that we incorporate more detail along the lines of Sacramento or other communities who have been, been able to invest more time in researching this?
Yeah, I'll ask the staff or Mr. Johnson, one of the, one of the two groupings to respond, and then we'll open to public.
I guess I'm addressing staff though, right now.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer. So, the goal right now is to have a process in place by January 14th, and so, we're trying, what we, the effort that we put into this, bringing this to you tonight, was to try to come up with objective standards that we could use to evaluate applications if they came in on January 14th or after. We do believe that there will be a need to keep an eye on the, on our regulations to see how they work and possibly modify in the future. This is the reason why we presented it in this way, with an ordinance directing to the policy resolution, so that modifications to the policy resolution would be an easier task.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Yeah, just, you make, you make reference in your report, you or Rafi, or a combination of the two of you, to if there is no ban on installations in residential areas, that those installations might be restricted to arterials within or around residential neighborhoods. I'd appreciate if Mr. Johnston would speak to that as a compromise that might not draw a legal challenge or a successful legal challenge. And then the same thing, if he would speak a little more on the subject of undergrounding, a mandatory undergrounding requirement.
Now would be good, and it might be useful to, or helpful to those in the public.
So, with respect to, with respect to limitations on facilities to major or minor arterials in residential areas, the question becomes if an application is submitted and in a location that's not one of those, so it's submitted on a local road in a residential area, how do you evaluate that project? So, if you deny it because they're not proposing it on a major or minor arterial road, the basis for that decision would have to be rooted in that three-pronged test. Is your regulation, is that prohibit, is that prohibition in local roads, is it technically feasible? Well, some of these facilities don't propagate very far. They propagate, you know, maybe 250, 500, 750 feet in radius. So, it might not be possible that a major or minor arterial road in a residential area location would be an adequate substitute and meet that reasonability standard. So, on a case-by-case basis, it's difficult to say in all instances that a prohibition on local roads in residential areas is going to be legal. And the second question was, I think there was one before that about the, is a prohibition in residential areas effectively a moratorium? And, and, and no, it's not, it's not a moratorium. It would be an individual basis to decide a permit application. So, say the applicant comes in and says, I want to deploy in a residential area, but you say, no, we've got a prohibition in residential area, that right there, that's the decision. The decision is made, it's a permit denial. That applicant can then go walk into federal court and challenge that denial for violating those, that three-pronged test. So, it's not a moratorium, it's an independent cause of action under that, under that effective prohibition analysis.
Could I make inquiry, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I think it might be useful for the council to have Michael expound upon that a little bit. I'd be curious, if such an action were to be filed by the applicant, how would he predict that it would unfold? Would it be a court trial? Would it be a motion for summary judgment?
Negotiated settlement. It would, it would be likely be a negotiated settlement, so...
Well, what if it weren't a settlement? What if the municipality client were wishing to litigate the matter? Could you sort of describe the way the case would unfold?
So, the case would unfold under that, that three-pronged analysis, that the court would look at evidence as to the technical feasibility of putting a facility that's intended to cover area X but located in area Y. It's, these, the issues of technical feasibility are often resolved in favor of the carrier. They happen to be the party that has the information available to make those determinations. Courts in the past, under the previous regime, when we're evaluating least intrusive means on a scale of whether it's technically feasible or not, have deferred that question almost overwhelmingly, and looked specifically at whether the aesthetic regulations are, were met or not met. And when they're met and the other prong is at issue, they tend to side with the carrier.
So, so are you familiar, then, with how the evidence would be submitted? Would it be on a motion? Would it, would they have witnesses testify about what's technically feasible?
RF engineers from the, from the carrier side would proffer testimony that show, first, visual evidence with propagation maps, and then they would supplement that testimony with, supplement that evidence with, with testimony. And they would describe in pretty vivid detail what the current service levels are, what they're trying to achieve in service levels, and how that facility would meet those service levels.
And I assume it would be a question of law for a judge?
The, it's a mixed question of law and fact, right? So, the question of whether a facility can, is technically feasible and can meet the service requirements that the carrier is proffering is still a question of fact.
So, they might get a jury?
Of course.
A federal jury? Okay. So, you get the idea. I just wanted to have it be clear for the council, the way the litigation of the issue would look, and then an adverse decision could be appealed to the Ninth Circuit.
And then a lot of these cases would actually be a bench trial. They tend to not get juries involved in these technical questions.
So, I would like to, last question, because I do want to turn to the public if we could.
You were also going to address the undergrounding requirement.
The city's authority to require undergrounding is the strongest, strongest in areas where utilities are already underground. It's almost certainly to meet that three-pronged test, right? If everything's underground, so do the carriers have to go underground. The thing that can't go underground is the antenna. The antenna always has to be above ground. It's not technically feasible to operate antenna equipment below ground.
So, but on this consistency issue, does that mean that if we, in order to be reasonable, we would have to require other utilities with, with apparatuses that typically go in boxes, that we would require them to go into underground vaults so that we can do the same with telecom carriers?
That would be the argument proffered by the industry in that individual application, yes. If, they would say, speaking as, as power the industry, if other utilities are above ground, you have not treated them the same way you've treated our wireless infrastructure. You're asking for equal treatment. Whether that's an argument that would win is, I think it's still up for debate. These rules are in their nascent stages. The contours are still being defined. The regulations that the city adopts today are not going to be the regulation, or the regulations the city considers today are not going to be the regulations that, that last for, for the duration of this order. The changes will have to be made because the contours will be filled in by litigation in other cities, potentially litigation in this city. That's, that's how these, these regulatory matters are resolved.
Could we avoid choosing favorites in that example by saying, for example, that we would allow hypothetically two above-ground installations per city block? Any thereafter would have to go underground.
That's an issue of, of equitable treatment to other carriers. So, to treat, one of the, one of the requirements is that you have to essentially treat all of their infrastructure deployments the same. If you let someone above ground, presumably you'd have to let the next person above ground as well.
Not if we have a clear first come, first served requirement, though.
There are, also buried in the, in the Telecom Act in section 332, 47 USC 332, is a requirement that all regulations, all local regulations, have to treat functional equivalent service providers the same. So, that, that deployment, that regulation would not meet that standard. not meet that standard.
Just really quick.
This is the last question, folks, and then we're going to hear from the public. Go ahead, John.
Andrew mentioned, and, and I believe it was mentioned too, that the, it was previously mentioned, and I believe by our consultants here, that, that these sites have been in place for 4G as well. Do, do we know, in the city, do we have any of these small sites existing right now that have been supporting 4G? Has there ever been an application for these, these pieces? Because I would imagine, with the technology, 5G is new, it's not even really out there. These things that you're showing in Beverly Hills and Boston, are those for 5G, or are those existing sites for 4G that have been in place?
Small cells have been deployed since approximately 2007, became more popular in 2012. In the run-up to the Super Bowl, they were deployed en masse in San Francisco in 2014. These have been serving 4G LTE, not, not 5G. Five, 5G mobile services are not available yet.
Correct. So, so do we have any small sites in the city now? Have we received any applications?
We have not received applications. We don't have any small sites that we believe. We've received some inquiries that were called 4G, but our understanding is that they would be laying the groundwork for what could be, become 5G.
So, so, in all, this could have been happening for the last five, ten years, small sites, but we're hearing about it, small sites, but we're hearing about it now with the advent of, of 5G and that technology that specifically uses these small cells.
The marketing campaign on the industry side has ramped up with 5G. 5G is intended to be some transformational technology that could potentially replace, you know, your, your, your at-home internet service provider, your wired length with a wireless one. It could, you know, make telemedicine applications available. It could make autonomous cars a reality. These are the types of marketing campaigns that are associated with 5G. These have been deployed in, in large cities en masse for, you know, several years at least. And they've been doing so because that's where the return on investment is the greatest, where there are these dense populations, and filling in, you know, these urban canyons of buildings is incredibly difficult with a macro facility. They have to get down closer to the user, downtown San Francisco, those sorts of areas. It's now just starting to push into the suburban regions, where that data, that data crunch is occurring in, in the same type of, of quantity it's occurring in, in, in urban centers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stand by, because we now are going to have public comment. And, and before we start, the initial, initial presentation, Vicky Severs. Vicky, good evening.
Thank you. We commend the council and the community development staff for the considerable attention given to drafting and crafting over the last few months, especially a resolution that provides flexibility going forward. That said, the agenda report in places may be more hospitable to carriers than protective of public safety. For example, on page eleven, with respect to a setback from residences, it reads, Jonathan Kramer has advised that requiring setbacks is problematic. This seems akin to an attorney saying, getting my client acquitted is problematic. How about rolling up sleeves and finding workarounds that remove or minimize that which is problematic? Several aspects of the resolution bear reconsideration. I'd like to highlight just three. Letter E reads, no notification or public hearing is required. While this pertains to design review, surely public concern about antennas is so great that notification and public process at any juncture will help maintain public confidence and should be at least attempted. Letter F allows applications for small wireless facilities in batches of ten. We suggest that the smaller the batches, the more discouraging to carriers. Let's not be saying, "Come on in." Letter I, height limits for antennas. A minimum of ten feet above sidewalk is alarming. Ten feet is immediately above pedestrians or right in front of office windows, for example. We submitted science-based rationale for height of a hundred fifty feet. Even the FCC definition provides for fifty. Finally, with respect to monitoring radiation output from all wireless facilities, the city is moving from three-year review to five. This is the wrong direction. Because the operator pays the cost, there's no reason not to shift monitoring to a twenty-four-seven remote automated platform. The next public comment is a video. This is a special allowance from the ever-cooperative city manager Jim Schutz and the ever-cooperative Lindsay Lera. It's, it features Dr. Sharon Goldberg, an expert, she's a medical doctor and a medical professor. She's an expert, specialist on environmental illness, especially focused on the effect of radio frequency radiation and, or radio on EMFs. She is notifying, in this video, she is testifying before Michigan state legislators. So, she is educating elected public officials like we are here, like you're here. At the conclusion of the video, public comment will resume, other speakers like myself, and in consideration of the time given to this video, please, everyone, be sensitive to the content of the speakers who precede you, and minimize and avoid repetition, if possible. Know that at the end of public comment, you will have the opportunity to stand and have your interest noted. Thanks.
We worked out a little deal, because normally we allow for two minutes for public comment, across the board for everybody, but we did want to have an opportunity to view the nine-minute video, so I would hope that you, you will take into consideration the comments made, and thanks for doing so.
Thank you.
Do you want to show that now, or what's the sequence?
I'm Sharon Goldberg. I'm an internal medicine physician. I've practiced medicine for twenty-one years, and my background is mostly academic, internal medicine, hospital-based, clinical research, and medical education. I am an MD. I'm board certified in internal medicine. I've been assistant professor at different medical schools, mostly in New York, most recently the University of Miami. Wireless radiation has biological effects, period. This is no longer a subject for debate when you look at PubMed and the peer-reviewed literature. These effects are seen in all life forms, plants, animals, insects, microbes. In humans, we have clear evidence of cancer now. There is no question. We have evidence of DNA damage, cardiomyopathy, which is the precursor of congestive heart failure, neuropsychiatric effects. So, 5G is not a conversation about whether or not these biological effects exist. They clearly do. 5G is a conversation about unsustainable healthcare expenditures. Why do I say this? We've been sitting on the evidence for EMR and chronic disease for decades, and now we are seeing all these epidemics appearing. So, diabetes is the first epidemic. I think most of you know the statistics. They're very scary. One in three American children will become diabetic in their lifetime, and if they're Hispanic females, the number is one in two. So, what does this have to do with wireless radiation? Wireless radiation and other electromagnetic fields, such as magnetic fields and dirty electricity, have been clearly associated with elevated blood sugar and diabetes. That is what the peer-reviewed literature says. It is not opinion. The closer you live to a cell tower, the higher your blood glucose. That is based on hemoglobin A1C measurements. So, the idea with small cells of putting the cells closer to people's homes and bedrooms, scientifically, is very dangerous. The way you create a diab, a model of diabetes in rats, in the lab, is by exposing them to 2.4 gigahertz, and this is not for long-term exposure. The huge problem with diabetes really is chronic kidney disease. End-stage renal disease, the worst complication of diabetes, leads to hemodialysis. Hemodialysis is an automatic qualification for Medicare. And if you don't qualify for Medicare, we still have to dialyze the patient, and the state ends up paying in many different instances. So, renal failure is 1% of Medicare, but it takes up 7% of all Medicare expenditures. The other epidemics that clearly link from the science with electromagnetic radiation are related to mental health, and this is, this is straight from PubMed. This isn't my opinion. This is science. So, we have three epidemics that clearly, they're essentially one epidemic. We have deterioration of mental health in the United States. And if you look really at the science, what does it show? Elect, and these epidemics are our suicide epidemic, epidemics in violent, so shootings, and the opioid epidemic. These are facts. These aren't, and these are things that have just been glossed over by the wireless industry. The CDC, tracking these epidemics, needs to, we need to start measuring how much radiation are people being exposed to. And before we roll out 5G, and this means, there are four kinds of electromagnetic fields that we know are harmful to human health. So, radio frequency radiation, magnetic fields, dirty electricity, and electric fields, okay? Our exposure, any given person, and all humans are affected by EMFs, our given exposure has nothing to do with the research that, that my colleagues are going to cite, with the National Toxicology Program. That is an assessment of the risk of one cellphone in the near field, okay? What is our exposure? In a, in a day? It's not one cellphone. It's cell phones, it's multiple wireless networks, it's smart meters, it's cell towers, it's this sandwich, and it all adds up. And this is a, this is a serious problem for occupational health, public safety, and personal safety. And I feel that it's irresponsible to be even talking about the Internet of Things and rolling out a new untested technology when we're not even measuring what are our current exposures from the current networks. The National Toxicology Program shows clear evidence of cardiomyopathy in that study. In other words, that's a precursor to congestive heart failure. And I want to just read one thing, if you'll allow me. This is from the United States Renal Data System, healthcare expenditures for persons with chronic kidney disease. So, over half of the 2015 Medicare spending for beneficiaries aged sixty-five and older was for those who had diagnoses of CKD, diabetes mellitus, or heart failure. All three of these conditions, when you look as an independent scientist, not someone who's funded by wireless, all of those three conditions are linked. So, diabetes and heart failure are linked with EMF exposures. They're, it's very clear. Many of these organizations have conflicts of interest, and I can't speak to, I don't know who's on their board, who made these decisions. I, my testimony comes from, I've been reading this literature for years, and really I got interested in it because I spent my career taking care of so many patients who were sick in the hospital, that when I found out about the links, I was just shocked. I couldn't believe it. So, I've, I've read these articles myself, and the experts who don't work for telecom and who are in, their independent research, everyone comes to the same conclusion. This isn't, we've, we're not in a place where we should be debating this anymore. This is exactly what happened with tobacco. The only people who are able to protect Americans are our legislators, because we don't have any, any relevant regulatory guidelines to protect human health. The FCC guidelines were developed for short-term exposures, six minutes, thirty minutes, depending on it's a phone or an outdoor exposure, and they have absolutely no connection to the biological effects that have been very clearly summarized. 5G is an untested application of a technology that we know is harmful. We know it from the science. Human subjects' research is very tightly regulated. You can't just roll out some type of a research project on human beings unless, A, you have their informed consent, so they understand the risks and benefits, and B, you have the approval, like someone has actually, you know, examined the literature and said, "Okay, this research project, we believe that it's safe. There's no evidence in the science to indicate that it would not be safe." We have decades of evidence to show that it is not safe. Researchers who are funded by private industry, the results of their research are much more likely to support their, the, whatever it is that is being funded. No one's measuring, and, and that is the problem. Your exposure will depend on where, like, what you do in a given day. So, if one cellphone causes cancer, clear evidence of cancer, DNA damage, heart damage, what happens if you work at an airport? What, what happens if you work in a stadium where there are a hundred thousand people coming to watch a football game, and everyone's using their phone at the same time? We have a very, very systematic, clear, empiric way to measure these exposures, and it's a discipline called building biology, and there are certain situations relevant to public safety where we really do need to be measuring, with firefighters, with airline pilots. Because when you activate microwave radiation inside an enclosed metal space, you get, you get amplification, you have increased power density. So, think about it, an airplane, everyone's with their devices, every device is emitting radiation, and the, the wa, the access point is right next to the cockpit, usually. So, what does this do to pilots? What does this do to firefighters? Firefighters that were unable to function in the line of duty, this is from 2013, after, after exposure to a cell tower that was put up near their, near their station, and they, they also have two-way communication devices that they wear. So, we have to measure these exposures. That is the, the start, and not go ahead and roll out a whole bunch of Internet of Things with more, like, more devices that we're not even measuring what we're exposed to now.
Doctor, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you, committee members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Sharon Goldberg. I'm an intern.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Maybe I, maybe I should hold it. She's one of, like, thousands of scientists all over the world. Everything she's saying, I concur with. On this panel, and a couple of comments over here, I have something I think everybody is missing, and I'd like to make that pretty clear in a couple of minutes. First of all, I'd like to read a quote from the National Institute of Health. See, the thing is, what I'm, what I see very clearly is, we're in a fight. The Federal Communications Commission is the industry, is the tech, is big tech. They're staffed by big tech. They are big tech. So, the fight is between big tech and us, and we're, they don't care about our health and safety. They make it very clear in their mandates. The National Institute of Health said, quote, "The industry and the FCC are pushing fast at both the state and federal level to put forth legislation to take away home rule in our local municipalities, so that the industry can install toxic," is this thing going off, or I don't?
A little bit. Continue.
I'm too close?
Yeah.
Can install 5G infrastructure before any NTP study findings can be reported out. The FCC and industry are not concerned with public health. Okay, so here's, here's my point.
If you could, each of us will have two minutes, and you've, you've gone to that.
Have I used two minutes?
Yes, that's what that red light means, but if you, so you could wrap it up.
All right, let me make my, my point here. I want the city and county government to clearly say no to the FCC. No 5G installments of any kind in Marin until it can be proven safe for us and the environment. The mandates of the FCC, by not allowing health and safety to be a consideration, has clearly shown their mandates are unjust. We have an obligation and a right to refuse to obey unjust laws.
Sir, if you could wrap it up, we have many people that wish to speak as well.
Say again?
Said, if you could wrap up your comments, it would be appreciated.
All right, that's it. We, we have an obligation and a right to refuse to obey unjust laws. A pop, and that's, this is the legal point I think you're all missing. A popular quote of Jefferson. A popular quote of Jefferson, "If a law is unjust, a man is not only right to disobey it, he is obligated to do so." The Thomas Jefferson Foundation website suggests the quote is a paraphrase of Jessamyn's statement in the Declaration of Independence, "Whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government."
Thank you for your comments. I would, I would suggest that this is an emotional topic, we understand, but we also have to understand that there are many that wish to speak this evening, and I think it would be most appropriate to maintain the two-minute time period that has been designated, and thank you for doing so. Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Jim Benster. I wish to broaden the context of this discussion, because I think we've allowed it to become too, too narrow. The Declaration of Independence says, "Governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed." Governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed. Now, we here all did a pledge of allegiance that ends with liberty and justice for all. When Benito Mussolini and the fascists rose to power in the '30s, their slogan was "Law and Order." So we have a fascist government with law and order, which was a top-down control hierarchy. We, the people, made our constitutions with the federal government and the state of California, which are contracts bringing them into existence. People derive governments, governments charter corporations. What we've seen is a total reversal, corporations controlling governments, governments trying to control us. And I want to see, I know you're in a very hard place, because an industry-controlled FCC and FDA, et cetera, they've all been co-opted, are giving regulations which diminish your ability to make decisions for the people whom you represent, and by the way, each of you have an oath of office, which says you will uphold the Constitution of the, of the Constitution of the United States and of California. And principle among those is the health of your constituents, the health and safety of your constituents. You have sworn among the most solemn oath you'll ever, ever swear to uphold that health. Now we're told that in a 1996 law, you can't do that. There's something wrong with the law itself. That law should be overturned, that's unconstitutional. You were told to take health out of the debate, and it's the very thing you and I and everybody around us is being affected by that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
This is the most amazing time. I am Celestine Starr with Papillon Life Services out of Fairfax, but I felt strong enough to come here today, and I'm so honored to be before you. So I wanted to give some examples, something that could maybe give you, something to look forward to in your situation, and that is proof of sensitivity of solar flares that would cause fires, because we're in high-fire potential areas, which may be helpful for you to do some research. And let me see, I want to bring up, it's, it's a writing from The Medium, which was in November of 2017, and it states, "The crowd solution." There's a firestorm. A few journalists, scientists, and this author believe that the 4G network of cell towers created the electromagnetic field that allowed the solar flares to cook the houses directly without running through the power lines or smart meters. In a total of 72, 77, cell towers burned up or were damaged. They were not the source of the, that lit the fires, but the feeders. So to do a little research in that, because we were such in a high-fire area, that may be a potential that would help to set some regulations or stipulations that would allow us not to have to bring these towers in. The next thing I wanted to share is, let's see. Have there been any discussions with the carrier companies? I mean, I've been hearing about they're going to come in and do all these applications, I want to come into this neighborhood and this neighborhood. Has there been any negotiations or meetings with the courier companies and set them to be responsible for their applications, knowing that they cause health hazards? So, and then if I might just say demographics, now taking demographics of San Rafael and the low, and the areas, so that if they do, in the event, put the towers that you can have something to measure, the health levels of the people once the towers are put in. Maybe there's some information about that. Thank you.
And, and thanks for sharing your thoughts. And I, I, I think I owe everyone, or some, an apology. In San Rafael, perhaps unlike your community, we limit comments so it's, so we can hear from everyone to two minutes. So when you see the light come on, that means your two minutes is up, and if you could wrap it up at that point, we would appreciate it. I should have made that more clear at the outset, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I was wondering about that.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you, and I really appreciate your really insightful questions that you've posed to the man representing the legal aspects of this. Essentially, you know, the thing that comes to mind for me outside of all the health considerations, which are really huge, is the fact that, you know, in our constitution, people have the right to bear arms, but the, our founders could not have foreseen the fact that people can get bazookas, that they can mow down hundreds of people within minutes. That just is something that couldn't have been foreseen, and the 1996 law that's on the books could not have foreseen the deleterious effects of 5G installation of small cells. So I think that really has to be accounted for. You guys are the lions at the gate. You know, we have to depend on you to represent our interests, the interests of the public and the community at large. This is a really huge question. I truly hope that you guys will have the backbone to stick up for all of us, for yourselves, your families, your children, future generations. This is not something that should be ignored. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Chandu Vias. We have been living in San Rafael for over 32 years. I'm very sensitive to wireless radiation. I found out firsthand when a smart meter was installed at our home. I suddenly developed terrible daily headaches. After many tests, my doctor found nothing wrong. Then I visited my family in India for a month, and my headaches were completely gone. When I returned home, my headaches also returned. After speaking at CPUC hearings in San Francisco, the commissioner gave me an option to opt out, and my headaches went away when the smart, smart meter was removed. There is an electric pole just outside our home. If they install a 5G antenna on the pole, I'm very concerned about the recurrence of my terrible headaches, and we won't be able to live in our own home. I don't want to go through the same health problem again, and I ask for your help. Please do not allow telephone companies to install transmitters on residential electric poles. Here is a picture of electric pole right outside our home. And anybody can have a copy of this thing. Right outside, right, this picture is taken right from our home. If you can zero in in. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Lonner Holden, and I want to bring the topic of 5G and the effect of RF and EMF on the natural environment. I've been nature-educated and a nature educator my entire life. I am intimately engaged with the natural world and the interdependent system that nature is. There is really one question here for me, which is, are people part of nature? Sounds absurd, given the situation we're in. Quick story, after decades of overgrazing by elk, wolves were reintroduced in Yellowstone National Park in 1995. After the wolves were reintroduced, the ecosystem in a few short years experienced a remarkable comeback and rebalancing of all forms of plant, insect, and animal populations. The depleted environment became a garden once again by the return of the system's peak predator. This is called a trophic cascade. Now imagine the inverse. Imagine the foundation of the food chain experiencing an apocalyptic atrophic collapse. Imagine the loss of immense populations of only insects, which constitute at least 80% of animal species on Earth, upon which all higher forms of life depend, including humans. Insects provide pollination, creation of soil by contributing to decay, the health of mycological air, without which there is no plant life. You cannot have a healthy ecosystem without insects. RF and EMF have been demonstrated by numerous peer-reviewed studies to negatively affect insect physiology, their orientation, navigation, and reproduction. To quote Dr. Andrew Goldsworthy, "Cryptochromes involved in the circadian rhythms of plants and animals are very badly affected by weak oscillating electromagnetic fields that are orders of magnitude weaker than the Earth's steady magnetic field. This can disrupt both solar and magnetic navigation in insects, which can account for colony collapse disorder in bees." In other words, the weaker the electromagnetic field, the worse the effect. 5G is worse than 4G because it's weaker. We're now at a convergence of critical, I'm almost done here, critical turning points. How long can our environment endure the increased introduction of human technology and development influences before the compounding of those influences causes an apocalyptic atrophic collapse in the most sensitive of populations, the insects and beyond? The San Rafael City Council has already implemented a climate action plan in favor of protecting our environment. A 5G telecommunications action plan in favor of protecting life is consistent with this council's precedent. Please take action to retain San Rafael's local regulatory jurisdiction over telecom technology installation and implement a 5G limitations within our community. Also, I want you to know, if you want my assistance in researching this position further and developing an appeal case for the city, I'm available.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Mayock, and one thing I think you have to ask Mr. Johnson, if you allow these towers, these single-cell towers, you will be subject to the co-location. They can put 20 cells on those towers, as long as, as long as it meets the maximum permissible radiation level. How do I know that? I know that because I have two houses next to a church that has 13 towers on it. I think, you know, the question keeps coming up about RF, you can't talk about RF. I think you can talk about RF. I think the problem that we have is that this is a 1996 Telecommunication Act. It's a 2,000-page act, which I've actually read, and it gives, you know, money to, to the veterans, it gives money to homeless, and the first 198, 1,998 pages and the last two pages, it tells us, you know, they're going to shove it up us. I mean, we're being bullied, and we have to understand we're being bullied. The act tells us that we have to meet a certain level, that level, the radiation level, to expand on what the lady was talking about, it's a maximum permissible level, which was done in a six-minute study. That six-minute study has nothing to do with cell towers when you're living in the neighborhoods. That's about low-level radiation. We now know that was done in 1996, that was a quarter of a century ago. So we're relying on technology, we're relying on procedures from a quarter of a century ago. That's ridiculous. We're talking about an industry that goes on the Moore's Principle, that doubles its processing speed every single year. You're talking about 5G. When that act was, was established, 1G was done, and now we're talking about 5Gs, it's thousands of times more. I mean, you have to understand what you're saying yes to. You have, you have all these new studies, you know, right now in the United States, the United States is an industrial nation that has, our limit is 1,000 micro, microwatts. The closest industrial nation is China, and China's at 10. Australia's at 1. I mean, it's, this is crazy. It seriously is crazy. You have to understand what we're, we're doing. In Marin County, we have the Marin Project. That, that's the one with the breast, the breast, high levels of breast cancer, high levels of autism, high levels of miscarriages. Just give me one more minute. In that study, there was a 600 scienti, you can read it, in that study, the Bio, Bio, the Bioinitiative, it says that the reason for all these was RF exposure.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, 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 okay.
Thank you.
My, I just want to say, the two houses that I have, we had two, we had two women that, that lived in, one was my daughter, they both had miscarriages when they upgraded the cell towers.
Hi. Thank you so much. My name is Valerie Hood, and I'm a Fairfax resident, and I appreciate your attention to this matter, and I see you're considering it. I appreciate that. Of great concern to me is increased fire risk from 5G microwave antenna systems, especially in regard to infrastructure placed on unregulated public light poles and the associated financial liability for our towns. A new and previously unknown fire risk factor was recently announced by Dr. Martin Paul, Ph.D., at the Fifth Generation Wireless Forum in Tucson, Arizona. Dr. Paul discovered that plants become more flammable when exposed to EMF radiation due to increased production of aromatic oils called terpenes, such as are found in citrus leaves and pine needles. As wonderfully aromatic as they are, terpenes are a highly volatile and dangerously flammable substance. This heightened production response occurs because EMF fields wreak havoc with intracellular calcium levels in plants, in much the same way that they affect humans and other animals. Upon subjection to EMF radiation like 5G microwaves, terpene production increases to the point that it is as if they received a light spray of gasoline on their leaves. This may well explain the heightened explosive high-temperature conditions experienced in recent Santa Rosa and Paradise fires, where three and four G antenna systems litter the landscape. The light poles in our town slated for 5G towers by the telecoms are often surrounded and adjacent to large numbers of trees and shrubs. The telecoms demand the right to place these fire hazards every 50 feet or less in our public rights of way. This access would create a huge added liability to our towns, homeowners, and shopkeepers. In this time of increased temperatures, cutting down trees, and exposing residents to increased levels of UV radiation is not a viable or wanted option. When selling a home or business, this potential hazard would have to be revealed, thus reducing home values significantly. And I wanted to talk about public evacuation, but you can imagine this is another factor too.
Hi, my name is Ruth Wiseman. I'm a long-term resident, and I've had a business in San Rafael for over 30 years. I would thank you for this opportunity. I've read your proposed draft ordinance and much of the 162 pages, as well as the supporting documents. The dangers to human health and safety from the proposed rollout of 5G wireless cannot be denied. I first, I read over the agenda report and the summary, and I first got lost in the minutia of these two examples. The city prefers the co-location of facilities which doesn't require public notice to surrounding homes and businesses. For most residents, such a public notice might be the first time they hear about 5G. The city doesn't recommend an outright ban on the placement of small-cell wireless in residential areas. Why not? Many cities have done exactly that. And what about commercial and industrial zones? I have a store in the industrial zone, and I work with many others in our corporate offices in a commercial zone of San Rafael. It's okay to fry our brains during the workday? You cannot mitigate the effects of 5G radiation in the privacy of your workplace or your home, which is completely unacceptable. Then I stepped back from reading the details and looked at the larger picture. Why is the city of San Rafael in such a rush to enact an ordinance that endangers its residents? Why does the city hide behind the statement, quote, "to ensure public health and safety consistent with federal law and FCC regulations"? What if federal law doesn't ensure our health and safety? What if the FCC's final ruling in May of 2018 is based on What if the FCC's final ruling in May of 2018 is based on outdated regulatory standards written in 1996, which are uninformed about the dangers that 5G poses? How can you support a law that gives power to the telecommunications industry to fry our brains with no place to hide, to perform a massive-scale experiment of known harm without our informed consent? If the city must choose between the health and safety of its residents and a law that prohibits considering our health and safety, what are you going to choose? Let me help you, let me help to remind you. Your primary job as elected, appointed, and hired government worker, as our public servants, is to protect the health and safety of the public. Everything else is secondary. I urge the council to enact a moratorium on 5G or any other small-cell wireless rollout in the city of San Rafael. I also urge you to join other responsible towns and public entities across the country in suing the FCC for their overreach, their denial of local control, their disregard for the health and safety of all Americans with their erroneous and dangerous radiation emission standards. I appreciate the time and effort that was put into creating this draft ordinance, but your priorities are turned upside down and your efforts are sadly misdirected. This draft ordinance, in its present form, represents a breach of public trust by denying what you're, what is in your own records, by acting as if your hands are tied, they are not tied. You are seriously neglecting your duty as public servants entrusted to work for the common good. This civic duty must put the health and safety of the general public first and foremost before any economic interests. We expect nothing less. And our children and the future generations that trust you and all of us will be responsible leaders that work to safeguard that future. Thank you.
Good evening, City of San Rafael. I'm Trish Borstein from Nevada, and I oppose this ordinance, and I yield my time to Ruth Wiseman.
Hello. Whoops. I'm Isasha from Mill Valley. And I'm not a scientist, I'm not an attorney, I'm a humanitarian who cares about all of life. A friend sent me a video about birds in Holland. In the commentary, there was a story that I want to tell you about, and I titled the story, it's an excerpt from the video, so I included part of it. The birds were found under trees where they normally slept. A Verizon 5G tower was tested in East Irvine, California last week. It was at 7:00 AM. I was startled by two very loud bangs on my front door. I went out and found two dead birds laying by entry. They flew into my front door and hit so hard, it shipped the paint. Next to my five-foot hedge were two more birds. They flew straight into the shrubs. A short time later, we watched as coyotes ran out of the woods, running south into a housing tract. They looked very confused. Make what you want of it. On a personal note, I, for one, consider this domestic terrorism by corporate Verizon and others, greed. I've been told starlings are not a protected species. If this is true, it needs to be changed. We, the people, are endangered by corporate greed. Please do whatever it takes to make this a done and not allow it. Boot them out. Tom Wheeler, he's not all there. Do you want to be aligned with somebody like that? Hitler wasn't all there either.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Phillips and City Council. My name is Dr. Jaclyn Chan. I'm here on behalf of my patients. I just wanted to elucidate some of the studies that the former doctor was talking about. These have been available, as she said, over the past twenty years. The Wireless Technology Research Study was a six-year study mandated by Congress in 1990, and over 200 doctors exposed human blood to cellphone rates that had 300% increase in genetic damage. The Interphone Study, in which six out of eight studies found an increased risk of glioma, forty percent, that's a horrifically deadly brain cancer tumor. From what we understand physiologically, what's happening is that the Wi-Fi attacks the sensor in a, in a channel in the cell membrane called the calcium-ion gated channel, and that creates an influx of calcium, which is the number-one physiological mechanism underneath dementia. And as you know, dementia is on the rise in this country, it's a deep concern, it's now one of the six leading causes of death. Also, virtual reality, do we really need this in our homes? There is something called Internet Addiction Disorder that Japan is going to put on their ICD-11. They have shown white matter tracts in the brain that are abnormal in adolescence. So what truly are the benefits to having faster virtual reality in our living rooms? Thank you for fighting the good fight.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Susiana Ruman. I live on San Rafael Avenue. I have a sixteen-year-old who rolled his eyes at me when I suggested he come with me tonight because this was something that he might be interested in. He's attached to his cellphone, and I myself, not the pot calling the kettle black because I work in tech, I actually represent a company called Lutron that probably has the most number of patents in smart home devices in, in the world. And I have advocated for this technology because I think it does do a lot to help us reduce our carbon footprint and makes pulling in the use of electrical devices in our home easier. And there are some real benefits to these devices. But I'm also the mother of a sixteen-year-old, and I'm also old enough to remember something, and I just wanted to take my last minute and read something to you that made a big impact on me when I was my son's age. "We stand now where two roads diverge, but unlike the roads in Robert Frost's familiar poem, they are not equally fair. The road we have long been traveling is deceptively easy, a smooth superhighway on which we progress with great speed, but at its end lies disaster. The other fork of the road, the one less traveled, offers our last, our only chance to reach a destination that assures the preservation of the earth." Those are the words of Rachel Carson, writing about the use of DDT. And when I went to go think about what was happening here, it reminded me of those times. And I want to just encourage you to keep fighting. You may have to thread the needle, you may have to find a legal course of action that looks absurd from where we currently stand to fight this, but we have got to fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lees. I'm from San Rafael, and I think there's already too much, there's enough, there's too much Wi-Fi, there's too much wireless, there's too much technology, it's taking over the world, and not just, we don't need any more of it, we have enough to sustain and meet our technological needs. That's one thing, not just for public health, but for the quality and safety of life on this planet, and for the future, the future generations, we need to think about that. So I'm asking the council tonight to investigate the accuracy of the lawyer who presented his information. I'm, there's several things that he presented that I'm not sure are accurate, and I'd like that to be researched rather than just taking it on blind faith. I questioned some of the things he said, along with the representative, her information. Both of those people did not necessarily seem to represent the public safety, and I'm asking the council to represent the citizens tonight. As well as the legal question, to ask the council to not be intimidated or manipulated by the telecom industry or by the legal threats, but instead to use a strategy to join with other cities and jurisdictions who have challenged and stood up to the FCC and stood up to the telecom industry. I think if you join with other areas and other cities and other attorneys, you can have a stronger footing and you'd have more power to do that. And there are people out there that are doing that. I guess my time is up.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you for adhering to it. Thank you.
My, my name is Kay Pennock. I have 195 Nova Albion Way. The condition I'm in right now, even though I'm disabled, is that I've been exposed to mold and mercaptan gas in my PG&E or MEC gas supply, which has resulted in giving me neurological, all kinds of health problems, including breathing seizures, loss of body mass and tone, gaining body mass. And being advised by Marin Fair Housing to ask for a reasonable accommodation, I'm given three-day and ninety-day notices and several eviction notices as a response. Not finding out how they can help me. Called the city fire department, building codes, to verify all these, all these code violations, and in turn I was attacked by them. I asked if they weren't going to help me not to notify the property manager, because this is exactly what they would do. Served me with three and ninety-day notices and eviction notices, and that's exactly what they did. Not only am I trying to fight for my life, try to live peaceably in a, where I'm paying rent, being a peaceable resident, their property has never been taken care of like it's been taken care of by me. This is a property that has been treated like a dollhouse, that's a matchbox waiting to, to go up in flames. And me being the canary, given the warning because of my conditions, is being ignored. Don't let this be a paradise, or a San Bruno, or a Sonoma County again issue. I've warned these people before and they don't listen. You have to get hurt first. Some child fell off a balcony, that I warned him before I came to that property, that the balcony was unsafe. And the little child fell and almost died before they initiated repairs. I did not cause an electrical fire when my heater was broken, my wall heater was broken, they refused to fix it. They told me to use an electrical heater, whenever they get to it, they get to it. A small electrical fire started, and I'm being charged $250. I'm being charged for plumbing repairs they never did to my apartment as a form of harassment. I came home last night to my bathroom being peed in, smelling like pee, and I didn't leave it that way. That's the kind of harassment and threats that I'm getting. Being three years in this county because I'm considered poor, black, or whatever else, it needs to stop. We're all humans. We're all trying to, we need to treat one another, each other right. Don't just take care of big businesses.
Thank you.
You have methane gas coming through your pipes, and the city is being protective of these landlords and these property owners, of big money, so is PG&E. And we, as residents, are getting no help and no protection when we call them. We're just ganged upon and violated. It needs to stop. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janet Fitzgerald. I live in Fairfax, but I spend time in San Rafael buying things, computers, cars, bike wrecks, and I hope to continue to come to San Rafael and feel safe shopping here, as I'm sure other people here do as well. Tonight, I want to simplify, if I can, what I've been reading and listening to for months now about 5G, which of course I oppose, and I'd like to divide it into three things, logic, courage, and vision. And I see a huge piece of illogic, as I think everyone here does as well, or most of us, and that is that, number one, being told that we can't object based on health. We laugh, right? So it, it's a basic human right and survival instinct, right? So of course we're going to care about our health, and we're listening to studies, we're listening to doctors and scientists. I hope we're allowed to care about our environment, about our wildlife, about our pets, about plants, right? So that's one. Number two is this is a democracy, and the FCC works for us, and yet we are running scared from them. We're afraid of what? A lawsuit. Let's turn it around and sue them. So of course that ties into, that's courage, right? And vision. So it takes a vision to do this. How do we do this? Well, let's look at some models. Governor Brown has sued the FCC based on what? Anyone know? Jerry Brown? On the, what's it called? The, I'm sorry, the, oh God, I'm out of time. Anyway, they're suing the FCC, they're suing the FCC on, thank you, net neutrality, thank you, thank you. I guess I'm, I guess I'm, I have too many things to think about right here. So let's, let's call on him before he leaves, maybe he can do a swan song and help us sue the FCC on something that's harming us. Net neutrality is a big deal, but it's not going to harm us the way 5G will. Well, not as much. 5G is far more serious, all right? So how do we do this? Because yes, you're between a rock and a hard place. How do we do it? Based on uniting, unite with other cities. That's not that hard. Reach out to other cities who are also opposing, and let's sue the FCC.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Stephanie Falcone, and I live in San Rafael, and I have spent countless hours timing and truncating, further truncating my statement so it will be under two minutes, but I just did want to comment that someone, people have raised a very good point that may be an avenue to take, A, the uniting with the other cities, but B, the fact that we are uniquely prone to firestorms. Oakland, you remember the Oakland Hills in 1991, Santa Rosa last year, Butte County and the Woolsey Fire this year. So the fact that... So the fact that 5G makes plants more flammable should be taken into consideration. But, to get to what I wanted to address, I'd like to talk to you tonight about the 2017 study by the Kaiser Foundation Research Institute, published in the journal Nature. Kaiser studied magnetic fields and miscarriage, and followed over 900 pregnant women in the Bay Area. Pregnant women who were exposed to higher versus lower magnetic fields had almost triple the risk of miscarrying. This study was included in San Anselmo's Ordinance 1124, June 2018, cited as one reason 5G needs environmental review, and another reason to proceed slowly with the implementation. Women with morning sickness exposed to higher levels of magnetic fields had the same miscarriage rates as women with no morning sickness. This is significant, as morning sickness has a well-established association with lower miscarriage rates. This study is important, because most EMF research, and I'll wrap this up, most EMF research focuses on cancer. And that's very difficult, because the development of cancer can take years between exposure and consequence. The Kaiser study looked at magnetic fields and miscarriage rates, so it was at most weeks between exposure and outcome, and it was almost triple the level. And so, I have here for the esteemed members, copies of the study, copies of San Anselmo's ordinance.
Hi, my name is Jay Grunkie, and I'm a newcomer to San Rafael, and I just want to thank you for the seriousness with which you're taking this, it makes me feel really good about my new home. I want to, a number of people have brought up environmental impacts of RF radiation in general, and so I just want to turn that around into a question, and ask, is that a possible route around the ban on discussing or regulating, based on health effects, regulating based on environmental effects, fire danger, effects, impacts on wildlife and plants and so forth? Has that been investigated? Just curious, I don't know if you can answer my question, but I would love to know. So anyway, thank you.
We'll get through the public comments.
Good evening. My name is James Hague, I'm a resident of the city, small business owner, a citizen, and tonight, a rabble-rouser. I'm not going to say anything you haven't already heard, but I feel compelled to say it anyway. The FCC is a captured agency, and it's run by a corporate puppet. You are not a captured agency, and we are not a captured people. I would urge the council to do absolutely everything in your power, including advocating for the very obvious health concerns of your constituency, to prevent 5G from being forced upon us. To do anything less would be a gross abnegation of the fundamental responsibility of any governmental body, to protect the safety and well-being of the people. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Chris Vegas, and I work for Verizon Wireless. At Verizon Wireless, I'm part of the Community Development Department, where we focus on building relationships with the local communities that we serve. I'm here today for a couple of reasons. The first reason is that I wanted to thank your city staff for proactively reaching out to my department, so that we can provide some insight into what our interpretation of the FCC order is, as well as what our deployment plans are for the city of San Rafael. Building off of that, or the second reason why I'm here, is to inform you that we do not currently have 4G or 5G deployment plans in the near future for the city of San Rafael. And the third reason why I'm here is because I would like to request that council direct city staff to move forward with option three that was presented in the staff report, and that's to continue to research the topic and to come back at a later time, and also to continue to work with some of the other wireless carriers in the industry. And I'm currently working with your city staff on connecting them with some of the other representatives from some of the other wireless carriers. With that said, with that said, I do have examples of what a 4G and a 5G Verizon Wireless deployment looks like, and I would like to share that with you if you'd like.
And that would be of interest, but let me ask, just so I'm clear, are you representing yourself, or your Verizon?
Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. And I understand you have something to present, too.
Correct, yeah, it's our 4G deployment. So if you look over to the right, the site on the left is a 4G streetlight pole that we deployed in the city of San Francisco, and over on the right, it's the similar design that was deployed in the city of Cupertino. We worked with the city of Cupertino in order to come up with design concepts that would conceal the radios that are along the pole, and we would be willing to work with the city of San Rafael in order to come up with similar design concepts that would match your city's aesthetic. And you can see from these photos, they're significantly smaller, or the footprint is significantly smaller from what we saw earlier today, and this still allows us to deploy our technology. The second set of photos that I have is for the city of Sacramento, and the 5G deployment that we did there. On the left, you'll see a streetlight pole, and over on the right, you see the wood utility pole. The difference, or the primary differences between the 4G and the 5G, is that with 5G, the radio and the antenna unit are combined into a single unit, whereas with the 4G, they're separated into separate units, and so the design is significantly smaller with 5G. Again, my name is Chris Vegas, and I work for Verizon Wireless, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys may have, as it relates to our deployment in the city of San Rafael. Thank you.
City Council, my name is Christine Toulis. Citizens, thank you for being here tonight. I address you all.
Thank you.
On spiritual grounds. Thank you. There's something called divine love, that I believe is the source of all life, a higher power, that which set all of this into motion, that which we don't fully understand. There are natural laws, and things at play that we don't fully understand yet, and we need to recognize that. We need to be humble enough to recognize that. I'm from New England. In colonial times, they used to put lead in their pewter plates. What we're talking about tonight is like putting lead in our pewter plates. It will kill us. We already know, from the esteemed, intelligent doctors who have spoken tonight, we know much more than we knew in 1996, when this law was put into place. I maintain that this law is corrupt. I maintain this is a corrupted system, and we need the sword of truth. We need the fire of truth to come from within, from within your own heart, when you listen to these facts, these arguments, to recognize that the powers behind this implementation are dark powers. They are not of love, they are not life-affirming, they are interested in money, greed, and profit, at any expense. This is unjust. This is unethical. I claim that we must wake up, as humanity, we must wake up to what is happening. If you have a heart in your chest, wake up, and I know it is beyond the scope of what you are doing tonight, to change all of this, but please, as my appointed official, representing me, we the people, we are up against corrupted souls. The people behind this, they are dark, corrupted souls.
Thank you, thank you.
One more point, one of our other great presidents, Dwight D. Eisenhower, right before he left office, said beware the military-industrial complex. We are caught in the web of the military-industrial complex, and the fact that a lawyer can stand in this room, and tell us that we cannot object to this on health grounds, is unethical, unjust, corrupt law. I will not stand for it. I will not stand for it. This law needs to be overturned, it is wrong.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
So we can hear from the others.
Hi, thank you for listening to all of us, really appreciate this time to actually educate all of you, all of you, that includes the lawyers here, also. This is a big, big deal that's happening, and as everyone before us has said, this is about health, and this is about money, it's about those two factors. I listened to a video from former Tom Wheeler, and he was in England, and he was saying very strongly how the United States and England were going to plaster 5G all over the world, and that that it was a good thing, and that they were not waiting for health tests to come through, or even care about it, because they were going to make billions and billions of dollars. We understand what that means, we're all very intelligent here. And I would like to say to you, that there are people in this room that have done so much research on this, and know so much detail on all the technical pieces that I don't know about. And those technical pieces are what you need. What we need is an ordinance that prevents them from coming in here, by making it so complicated for them to come in, that they turn around, which they have done in other cities. And so your lawyers have given you the limitations of what the FCC will do or will not do, and we are giving you the expansion of what we can do, because we know that something can be done, because this is the time. This is Trump's FCC, and he will be out at some point. This is activated people, you know, in a way that nothing has ever activated people before. And I was going to talk to you about the birds, or the bees, but I, we don't have enough time for that. But I just really want you to know, you have experts in this room that can help you do this, but this is our community, you know, this is our Marin, and we have to join with other cities, you know, we really do. We have to join and listen to what is going on, and how other places are getting them to leave, because there are other cities getting them to leave. So I just want to put this out to you. Like us, we have become courageous, and we ask you to become courageous with us. We are completely behind you, if you do the right thing with us, and we are not going away, and this will not go away. So thank you so much.
Oh, you can give it to the, so, please. Can, can, can we move on?
I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Thank you, Robert Anthes from Fairfax, thanks for hearing us tonight. I've combed through four ordinances now, to find the best aspects of each one, and what I was trying to give you was San Anselmo's exception clause. I'd like to focus on the exception clause. We can write the best ordinances possible, with all the great amendments and requirements that we want, but unless we have a very strong exceptions clause, that all of those requirements are vulnerable. You have a pretty good one, you mentioned certain principles, but I'd like you to take a look at San Anselmo's clause, because they have the same principles laid out in a five-step approach that fleshes them out more, and makes them more challenging, without being prohibitive. Most importantly, they have two elements that other towns don't have. They allow the city to hire an outside expert at the expense of the applicant, to review and rebut the claims made by telecom for an exception. This is really important, it's vital, otherwise telecoms can have virtually any exception they want. They also have a provision whereby any individual or any entity who's interested can appeal any approval. And this includes a public hearing, where the appellate body can consider and act on an application, which I think is a principal part of democracy, and they did this in spite of the fact that there are shot clocks, and that there's a shortened process, they still put this in there, and I'm recommending that you do the same thing. This section doesn't accept appeals based on health effects from emissions that comply with the FCC standards, and I think that's a disgrace, as everyone has already said. It also weakens your public authority. You will certainly have appeals based on health, and you'll need to have a response to those. And here's where I think you should put in a clause on the Americans with Disability Act. When we talk about the ADA, we're not just talking about health effects, we're talking about compliance with another federal law, that should go head-to-head with the FTA. I don't know why people aren't using it in a more creative way, but I think this is the time to start. You'll have to decide whether or not you want to accommodate and facilitate the telecoms, or whether you want to protect the health, the property values, and the privacy, and your own local authority, which was given to you rightfully by the voters, that are hoping that you will defend them. So please, take a look at that chapter, it's an excellent chapter, I think it will be helpful in your ordinance.
My name is Michael Rosenthal, I'm a resident of San Rafael for over 10 years. I'm here to ask the mayor and city council to consider at least temporarily banning any implementation of 5G wireless technology across the board, whether the zone is residential, commercial, industrial, or mixed. There are people living in all of those areas. True, we might be sued by the FCC, and/or carriers, and we might lose. So why would we try a moratorium, or prohibition anyway? Because what rational person wants to be a guinea pig in an experiment with potential dire health consequences? We, potential litigation would buy more time to let medical science better sort out the health implications. Thank you very much.
Hi there, my name is Still Connie Barker, I live in Nevada, but I lived in San Rafael for many years at Ecology House. I'm president of the Environmental Health Network, which is one of the groups that got Ecology House built back in the 1990s. For those who don't know, that HUD-sponsored building in San Rafael for people with chemical and electrical sensitivities. First, I'll associate myself with Roberta's remarks about the exceptions, I think that's a really vital piece to look at this. The second thing I want to say is about what other people have said about this issue not going away. One of the things that, you know, as president of EHN, I can speak to, is the number of people who deal with these kind of electrical sensitivities, who are closeted about it because of the stigma. And things like this will bring them out, and if this is rolled out, more such people will be created. The problem is not going to go away. The whole thing sort of reminds me of, you know, how it is in history, that the word railroad came to be a verb as well as a noun. It just, it makes me think of the gag rule. Do people remember what the gag rule was? Do you even know about that? When slavery was an issue in this country, and abolitionists were, you know, getting petitions all over the country, and wanting to present them to Congress, and Congress voted that no petitions on that subject, for the abolition of slavery, could even be presented or heard. This was a very big thing, it went on for 60, 70 years. The people who did not want to deal with that problem thought they had solved it by creating a rule that said you couldn't talk about it, well, it didn't get solved. And this one will not be solved that way either. We don't remember too fondly the people who thought that was a solution, we remember much more fondly people like Gavin Newsom, who is now our governor, or about to be, who when George Bush said, maybe we need a constitutional amendment, so that people can't get married, he said, I'll see your constitutional amendment, and I will raise you one city, defying the law, having people perform the ceremonies who couldn't be paid, because the whole thing was illegal. I was one of those people who stood in line in 2004, it changed my life, it was a great thing to find out that I had rights on the other side of it, I didn't know why I'd been able to settle for less, or why I would ever again settle for less. for less for my community. You'll find that this will do the same thing for people with electrical sensitivity.
My name is Arlene Hansel from San Rafael, and thank you so much for listening to us this late hour. I moved to San Rafael because I fled an apartment in San Francisco. I was absolutely bombarded with signal. Had, you know, the transformer outside, router, and then the smart meter. After that, I've always been healthy my whole life. I was a nurse and had another very successful career in pharmaceuticals, and I all of a sudden, I would lie in my, sit in my sofa, and I'd have actually a buzzing sensation in my chest, and also floaters and all kinds of, and ringing in my ears. Okay, since I worked in healthcare, I know how to read studies, and I'm not an abstraction. I'm not hysterical. I know how to be rational about it and look and see if there's a, you know, connection with things. So when I noticed when I had any avoidance or I had less exposure, I did not have these symptoms. So I had to leave the place. I knew that. So here I am in San Rafael, and I'm having similar symptoms in certain situations again, but not as severe. But I, we turn our Wi-Fi off at night. Everything's better. My doctors have seen this, you have, you know, they have documented the evidence. I have floaters. They go away. The doctors have seen them. They go away. All these things are reproducible when I'm exposed. So I know there's a connection. So I think you'll, I have met more people now who are talking about, you know, similar problems, and I think you're going to see a lot more with this. I'm literally going to be. I'm concerned. I'm, you, by coming tonight, I realize now, you've realized, I realize my worst fears that I will have to be. If this is allowed to go and happen in our country and all, especially in the, you know, more populated areas, I'm going to be banished to a rural area. And I'm single. I really don't want to. I really, really don't want to. But I will literally have no choice. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Louise Yost, and I'm a 19-year resident of Ecology House, which is located in the Canal neighborhood of San Rafael, which my colleagues just mentioned. I am also the events director for the Environmental Health Network, which offers, as she said, resources and referrals to the chemically and electrically sensitive throughout the country and the Bay Area and locally. I myself am chemically and electrically sensitive, so I'm very concerned about the 5G antenna issue. And as you know, Ecology House is a HUD-sponsored apartment complex for the chemically, electrically sensitive. If 5G antenna was built near Ecology House, residents would most likely have physical reactions that could include headaches, migraines, achy muscles, inability to focus, remember, articulate, brain fog, tingling sensations, et cetera. Residents would need to move elsewhere, and Ecology House could possibly become uninhabitable. But in fact, most residents cannot afford to move, and there really are no other non-toxic safe places to stay. It truly is in the city's interest to keep Ecology House safe and healthy and viable, for we are a vital part of the Canal neighborhood. We residents are involved in the Canal Garden, the Pickleweed Advisory Board, the Canal Welcome Center, et cetera. We have lobbied the city many times to not use Roundup at Shoreline Park, nor on the median strips on Bellum Boulevard for the betterment of all Canalians. We have also alerted the city many times about the furniture and trash left on the street and about the occasional smoking problem in Shoreline Park. So in short, we are an asset to the neighborhood and to the city as concerned citizens. So we would like to urge and support the city to write an ordinance that protects all citizens from the potential health effects of increased exposure to radio frequency, electromagnetic fields, on top of the already existing 2G, 3G, 4G Wi-Fi that we are already exposed to. Thank you.
Good evening. Really appreciate all that you're doing for our city and environment and everything. Sorry. Thank you for listening to us and for having the courage to do the right thing. I want to read something, but prior to that, I would like to, I haven't heard anything about one way of pushback that I understand some cities are using, which is that whatever fees are for the poles and, you know, dissemination of these things, as well as the relicensing fees every year, when there's additional fees. And I've heard that that is an area that some cities have used where the telecom companies just start backing away. So I'd really love for you to look into that, please. Now I'd like to read something that I was given permission to read by Lanner Holden, who spoke earlier in his beautiful piece and describing about the ecology and what happens, what happened in Yellowstone with the wolves and the other side of it with insects. Because one of the things that I started to realize recently is, where are the insects? I look at my car. I remember years ago when I would drive somewhere and there would actually be insects on my window shield. Where are they? They're gone. And then I read this article that just made me cry in the New York Times called "The Insect Apocalypse Is Here: What Does It Mean for Life on Earth?" If you haven't read it, I really recommend it. And just to go into a little of the study about the insects, the final little piece here is, "A shift of 10% of the incident power density to frequencies above 6 gigahertz would lead to an increase in absorbed power between 370%. This could lead to changes in insect behavior, physiology, and morphology over time due to an increase in body temperatures from dielectric heating." It even sounds evil. This is over the already disastrous effect of 4G on insects and their declining populations. At the bottom of the animal food chain are insects. All life relies on beetles, mosquitoes, flies, bees, ants, crickets, and their king. If no bugs, then no birds, frogs, fish, raccoons, deer, coyotes, or wolves, or humans. No bugs equals an atrophic collapse in the web of life, of which we are all part, a system in starvation. The consequences of a population collapse of the lower class of life ripples up through all levels of life. What is the value of 5G technology, really? So that I can turn up my thermostat in my house from my cellphone so the house is toasty when I arrive home? If I am thinking that I am conserving energy when I am in fact destroying the life around me, how well am I considering the consequences of my choices? What are the consequences of my comfort and convenience values when they cause me to become complicit in risking the collapse of the system of life of which I am a part and on which everybody's life depends? And just when, at what point in our understanding, or especially the lack thereof, do we collectively agree to not take the risk? Just when do we accept that what we do not know is the higher authority commanding reasonable respect?
Could you wrap it up, please?
Just when do we yield and say, "No, not now"? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Holden.
Hi, my name is Leslie Simons, and I've lived here for way too long. I have a telephone pole right, right off my property line. It's literally 15 feet away from my tenant space. Our neighborhood fought the battle to keep the smart meters in, and 5G is so much worse. The pole is so close to many houses. We're barely, it's barely off private property, and it's got eight residences, some of them two-story, in my case, three. Wildlife will be severely impacted, and along with ourselves and our pets. And my neighbor has a honeybee hive, which luckily he keeps supplying, and we have bees running around, although sometimes they look a little dizzy. Please, don't fall for the carriers. And I'd like to add this to the public record.
Please do. And Alex, just give me one second. It's now 10:30. We're starting to, quite frankly, repeat ourselves. We're interested in each comment, but we're also dealing with the issue, and we hope to extract from your comments those we wish to incorporate in our thinking. But if you're repeating yourself, we're getting into the wee hours when it's difficult, I think, to make good logical choices up here. So I would, I would ask that we accelerate the process, and if you have something to say, but it's already been conveyed, we've listened, and we don't perhaps need it to be repeated. So thank you.
Thank you. Alex Stetner, small business owner, environmental scientist. I'm an industrial hygienist by training. I'm on the board of the International Institute of Building Biology. And as much as I'd love to speak to you about science at a time when science is literally under attack, my hands are tied. So I will spare you some of the scientific information I'd love to share and instead focus on tiny little loopholes that I hope you are able to incorporate into your urgency ordinance. I will respectfully disagree with the fellow from Verizon and say that this is urgent and that you should have something on the books. It is by sheer good fortune that no 5G applications have been submitted thus far. I encourage you to be prepared for when they do, and they may come at any moment. So do it now. Do not delay. I direct you to page 10 of the San Rafael City Council Agenda Report. Some of the approaches that were discussed by staff. I encourage number one and number two, where there seems to be some sort of a tiered requirement system. This is again on page 10. For different zones, I would encourage you to protect residential, schools, and medical facilities above all else. Wherever you can impose additional restrictions or requirements and protect those areas, I would appreciate it. Number three on page 11 is also tied into number four, that I believe, you know, this may be in violation with FCC ruling with regard to prohibiting these facilities in residential districts. That might be something worth experimenting with. Let's see what happens. I encourage you also to join the other lawsuits that are in progress. The setbacks, I think a 500-foot setback from residential would be fantastic. Moving further down a distance, separation between small cell wireless facilities, I'd love to see that at 1,500 to 3,000 foot between antennas. And from a property value standpoint, something I don't usually speak about, I'd love to see everything underground. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for hanging with us this late hour for such a long, long night. We really appreciate it. My name is Bob Berg. I'm an 18-year resident and homeowner in San Rafael, and I work in the tech industry. I work in the tech industry, and I rely on the Internet, but I've researched this, as you've seen me before, the council before, and there are better alternatives than 5G wireless for high-speed Internet. That's fiber optic cable. And I would really like to encourage the council and the planning commission to continue the dialogue that they've graciously conducted with us, Paul Jensen and team, to explore options on this ordinance to try to put the necessary restrictions in place to protect us from the overreach of the FCC. But also, I'd like to really encourage the Verizon representative and his colleagues from the other carriers to really have an open discussion with us in the planning commission about running fiber optic cable to the premises rather than cell towers in our neighborhoods. Fiber optic cable gives us 10 times the speed with 1 gigabyte per second speed at a fraction of the cost that both the wireless carriers and Comcast are charging. It's safe. There's no fire risk. There's zero health risk. There's zero privacy risk. There's no breakdown in communication when cell towers go down because you're not having cell towers with fiber optic cable. So the other thing is that George Lucas graciously installed a fiber optic cable backbone already all throughout Marin County. It's there for the taking for us to build laterals, working with our carriers, to build laterals and take fiber optic cable to the premises. So again, I thank you for the time. I want to continue to work with Karen and Paul and the team to explore these things and help with the ordinance. So again, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're up.
Okay. Carone, Ally, Lisa, Kate, Andrew, and all the rest of you, Lindsay. Please excuse me for trying to educate you further, but I feel like that's my job these days. Kim Han, San Rafael resident of 40 years. The term phased array, phase as in the phases of the moon, array as in display, applies to a method of spreading radio frequency rays in a beam of waves from an array of antennas that can be electronically steered to point in different directions without moving the antennas. And because of the high frequency, the antennas can therefore be relatively small. 5G uses this technology to work. The industry has called the cells "small" because they are indeed smaller than a cell tower, but make no mistake, in order for the phased array to operate, it needs a large number of these cells, and hence the industry's insistence that many of them have to be placed very close together throughout our city. So how will 5G affect us? If you have a smartphone, your present phone is emitting a maximum of 2 watts and operating at a power less than 1. Inside a 5G phone, there may be eight tiny arrays of 16 tiny antennas each, all working together to track the nearest cell tower and aim a narrowly focused beam at it. The FCC has recently adopted rules allowing the effective power of those beams to be as much as 20 watts, which is 10 times what the 4G phone is now radiating. If a handheld smartphone sends a 20-watt beam through your body, it would far exceed the exposure limit set by the FCC. The FCC is counting on the metal shield between the display side of the phone and the other side that has all the circuitry and antennas, and if I were you, I would not count on that metal shield in your phone. What about 5G cell towers? The rules adopted by the FCC allow a 5G base station operating in a millimeter range to emit an effective radiated power of up to 30,000 watts per 100 megahertz of spectrum. And that's a whole lot of spectrum. That's why you'll see refrigerator-sized base stations on the sidewalk and small rectangular structures mounted on top of utility poles. Companies want so much power because millimeter waves are easily blocked by objects and walls and therefore require tremendous power to penetrate inside of buildings to communicate with all the devices of the Internet of Things. We simply must have, to lead successful lives, lives that will generate lots of money so we can buy those Internet of Things things we simply cannot live without. So please, the next time you think of buying your grandchild the diaper that measures its own moisture, think twice about what it is doing to everything else inside of it. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the council. Andy Perry, I live in Fairfax. Mayor Phillips, Andrew and Kate, thank you particularly for your work on the committee. It seems to me that there's two approaches being taken on this issue around Marin right now. The first is one that we are seeing that's primarily staff-driven, which is to move forward within the bounds of the Communication Act of 1996 and the FCC rules. This approach is all well and is an approach that we can use to move forward, assuming everything is just hunky-dory as it is, as it's perceived to be by the FCC and as the industry wants it to be. There's a second approach, however. The second approach is one that acknowledges, which Dr. Sharon Goldberg in the video we watched acknowledges, and the vast literature on biological and other human health effects, including effects in wildlife, endangered species, and so forth. The second approach acknowledges that cities and states across the country have done what they've done in various complaints and lawsuits that we've also heard about tonight. We urge you to not simply go along with what is, not be afraid to push back against the telecom's unjust mandate. In Fairfax, we are putting our heads together and using creativity to create what we think will be the strongest ordinance in Marin County. I was actually shocked to see that your staff is spending time with Sacramento. Sacramento is one of four cities in the country that have thrown their doors open to 5G. We would like to see you talking to Burlington, Massachusetts. The document that I just gave you has incredibly excellent recommendations for, I'm sorry, the language that they have is for applications, rather, for 5G. In that document, incidentally, there's a recertification clause that caused Verizon to walk recently from that city. I urge you to take to heart, again, the literature on health as we saw tonight, and again, take to heart what Burlington is doing, and not go to the places like Sacramento where the doors have been thrown open, but the places that are pushing back. My final point is, we have a website at 5gfreemarin.org. I urge everybody in the room to sign the petition. It's being launched today. And the town of Fairfax and our 5G Free Marin group has produced a document with 25 points on it that are creative ways of finding loopholes and getting around these kinds of issues. And we urge creativity in this process. And... And we urge creativity in this process and not just going along with what the legal arguments might suggest. Thank you.
My name is Richard Applebaum. I'm also a member of 5G Free Marin and part of the Fairfax Task Force. And I just basically want to reiterate, there's been just brilliant, brilliant commentary and insight and passion and vision in here tonight. It's been incredible. Just regarding your ordinance, it just doesn't feel very tough. And the message I've been giving our council is, I understand that, you know, these regulations, it's really draconian and we've had attorneys come in and tell us everything about what we can't do. And we're asking our attorneys to figure out what can we do, how can we be clever, and come up with an ordinance that's somewhat gnarly, you know, at least create some resistance. It's a bigger issue of whether you want to take on suing things and being a lead and how you want to, you know, take the kind of risks you want to take as being sued yourselves. And that's for you all to decide. And, you know, attorneys generally want to mitigate risk and keep you in the safe space. But I would say at least regarding your ordinance, I would not pass the one you have that's up here tonight. I would go back, study our 25 points. There's some really interesting things in there. We're playing with Endangered Species Act, different interpretations of ADA. There may be some creative things that can be done and I would beef your ordinance up. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking this issue into account tonight. And I'm not going to repeat what others have already said, but at least I'm going to try. And I just want to say I agree with so many of the points that have already come before. Thank you for listening. So right now, as we were just saying, Oliver, Marin, towns are writing and revising ordinances and town officials are responding actively to the outcry of the public. I'm from Fairfax. My name is Jess Lerner. I am also part of the 5G Free Marin task force organization and the task force from Fairfax. And we're in Fairfax are looking at a legal counsel to help us create something really significant that will reflect our needs, values and concerns without giving up our rights to health, safety, privacy and protecting the property values of the town. So the good news is, as Richard just said, we have those tools already outlined and ready for you to review and apply if you see fit. So we've done a lot of the work beforehand. It is a tricky thing to do, but we've got at least 25 points and we're continuing to add to those. This past week in Fairfax, we presented a thoroughly researched list that would legally tighten our current ordinance and our Planning Commission found all of the recommendations valuable to include going forward. They include: language on the ADA, addressing the decrease in property values, tightening the permitting process, requiring a more frequent and ongoing monitoring process, requiring extensive community notification and public meetings, the public process that we talked about earlier, establishing significant setbacks and intervals, prohibiting in residential zones, applying buffers near schools, childcare centers and healthcare facilities, applying the Endangered Species Act, considering view sheds and aesthetics, requiring a rigorous recertification process, requiring undergrounding and preventing fire hazards, among others. We have these resources for you to use as well. Here in San Rafael, we're asking you to do the same and truly be the city with a mission to protect the health, wellbeing and privacy of your residents and community. Thank you.
My name is Bob Burns, San Rafael, 30 years. The Nielsen Rating System is the primary surveyor of what we watch on TV. In 1983, Dennis Franz had a reoccurring role for only three episodes on Hill Street Blues, a crime drama episodic that changed the very nature of the genre. He was, of course, a corrupt villain and was killed off in the third episode. And that, as they say, was that. But not quite. The network received such a large volume of letters from viewers praising his performance. The Nielsen Rating System declared that when one viewer took the time and was moved to write, that accounted for 25,000 viewers at home who also felt the same way but just didn't take the time to write. The producer, Dennis Stephen Botchko, did what had never been done before. He brought back Dennis Franz from the dead. One for 25,000 people. I want you to keep that in mind. Now you all, I want you to please stand up if you are here and currently suffering from electromagnetic hypersensitivity. Check it out. Please stand up if you are here tonight because someone close to you suffers from EHS. Please stand up here tonight if you are here tonight because you are questioning the industry's already questionable approach to 5G technology and its unknown effects on our children and grandchildren. And please stand up if you are concerned about the future of our humanity and our effect on the planet. Now, stay standing, all right? The people you see standing before you tonight represent many more than just themselves. They didn't just drop by. Everybody came here with the intention to make a statement against 5G and many are suffering right now in this room from the Wi-Fi. We are here because we want you to know we count. One for 25,000. Thank you.
Any more comments?
I have a really quick one. Hi, I'm Bonnie McMurray. I live in San Anselmo. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we have smart meters in San Anselmo and I really never thought that should be such a big deal. I thought Fairfax was kind of weird when they came out, I think it was 2012, and said, you know, that they weren't going to have any. And I thought, well, you know, what's the big deal? Little electricity, it's never bothered me before. Well, little did I know, fast forward a couple of years, and there actually, and I didn't even check this out, there were like nine smart meters on my bedroom wall and I was buzzing, tingling and heaving in my ears. Anxiety has gone through the roof and I can't sleep. So given that, and I'm thinking about, you know, I've been reading about 5G, it just freaks me out. And I'm just wondering, you know, what's it going to take? Do we need to wait till the monarchs end up in Siberia? You know, they migrate to Mexico, maybe they're going to end up in Siberia now because they don't know where to go? And, you know, why wait for a criterion of incineration and given our seismic environment and that kind of thing? And I just really hope that you all will tighten the ordinances here, just as we've been doing in some of the other towns, and then we can really band together and become one Marin, 5G free, and at least if nothing else, wait for a criterion of that it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Boggs and I spoke to you last month regarding protecting our most vulnerable population, our kids, that need to be protected. The proposed ordinance suggests keeping a 200-foot setback from our homes and 300-feet interval between antennas. That's too close. It also only requires RF testing every five years. That's too long. Just today, Senator Richard Blumenthal and Congressman, woman Anna Esche, requested FCC Commissioner Brendan Carr to provide documentation substantiating 5G safety. Attorney Jim Turner, President of the National Institute of Science, Law and Public Policy, applauded this and stated, "NIS-LAPP considers it a mistake to place new high-frequency radiating antennas in local communities in very close proximity to homes, offices and schools when no pre-market health testing has been conducted on the effects of the radiation emitted. Let's not roll out the red carpet for this untested technology. The 1996 Telecommunication Act protects the telecom corporations. It gives the common people no protection. As the FCC stated in March of 2013, the commission intends to adequately protect the public without imposing undue burden on the industry. We implore you to protect the public and create an ordinance that does indeed create a rigorous burden on wireless carriers in an application. For those that may be permanently moving into our towns, please require stricter setbacks, intervals, frequent RF monitoring by an independent expert at carrier's cost and even annual recertification." Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, are you going to?
No, actually, I think my last.
Just a quick one. I want to thank the lawyers, Mr. McCullough, for your intelligence about talking about this on that level. And, you know, we have laws. If they were easy, we wouldn't have lawyers. And I want to remind you that the laws, there's a stack of them like this. And I'm sure you can find something in there that says that the health of the public is primary. I'm sure it's in there somewhere, right? Thank you.
Anyone else? In which case, thank you for your comments and your input. I guess I would like to, at this point, ask staff if there was anything that you heard that might change recommendations to us this evening with regard to at least our options. And then I'll ask Mr. Johnson if there was anything that came up that he feels should be expanded upon or enlightened us. We would appreciate it. And we'll reverse the order while you guys are chatting. Thanks.
I'm at the pleasure of the council, so however you guys want to approach this is...
Do you have to say about fees?
So the fees are actually directly addressed in the order. They are...
There you go.
They are, there is a presumptively reasonable rate that effectively works as a cap, $270 per pole per year. That is not high enough for them to back away. I saw a recommendation about exploring a fiber optic network in the city and the city has the authority to pursue municipal broadband network. What it can't do is require carriers to pursue a fiber optic network instead of wireless networks. The Telecom Act is pretty clear that each individual decision has to be made on the basis of the application. So if they're proposing wireless networks, the city has to consider and approve or deny them under the limitations provided in the FCC order in the Telecom Act. A lot of the health-related questions, I won't dispute the scientific reports that folks are talking about. What I will say is that it's a jurisdictional question, right? The Congress has decided that jurisdiction rests with itself and the FCC on these issues, not with local governments. So to the extent that there are health effects, the appropriate venue is before Congress, before the two Congress members that did petition Brendan Carr for further explanation. But unfortunately, it's not with the city of San Rafael. There was another question raised with respect to whether the environmental effects can be regulated rather than the human effects. And the law actually expressly discusses environmental effects. It categorizes human effects as environmental effects. Environmental effects are also not to be considered to the extent that the emissions comply with the FCC's rules. I saw a, or I heard a very vocal request to consider San Anselmo's ordinance. I would potentially recommend that. We drafted it. So if there are things that we can draw from San Anselmo, we'd be happy to incorporate those to the extent that they're applicable in San Rafael. But that is an ordinance and a policy that our firm drafted with the help and advice of city staff and, or town staff in San Anselmo. There was another comment about the potential co-location on towers occurring over and over and over again by right. That resident is correct that there's a statute that allows the co-location of certain modifications that don't cause a substantial change as that term is defined by the FCC. You can imagine it's fairly large. What, one of those caveats, though, is that if a modification defeats the concealment elements of the underlying facility, the city can reject that application. So what the policy and the resolution would intend to do is impose very strict concealment requirements that would make it very difficult to do by right modifications that don't also uphold those strict concealment requirements, antenna shrouding, undergrounding, potentially, that sort of thing. There were a few questions about who has the authority to issue these rules. The 1996 Act was adopted by Congress. Local governments are bound by the supremacy clause to uphold the law of the United States, which currently is enforcing the regulations that the FCC has adopted. With respect to high-fire region concerns, one thing that I don't believe is in the policy right now but could be is a strict structural analysis of each individual pole to make sure that it's capable of supporting the equipment, potentially requiring pole replacement if the pole is not actually suitable for that installation. Those are all recommendations I think are worth consideration. I think I am running out of notes. ADA compliance I would recommend including as well. There was a list of recommendations that one of the residents brought up, 25 points from Fairfax. I think it makes sense to take a look at those and consider them for whatever changes might be necessary to the policy to make it ready for adoption.
So let me ask you this then. You are representing us, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And certainly appreciate the effort thus far. But now I'm a little bit confused because we've heard considerable concern and testimony you've made reference to. And oftentimes, when you listed the four or five items that I've jotted down, you said that that seemed like a good idea and should be incorporated. So I'm a little bit confused as to why it's not incorporated thus far.
The sheer speed with which, with the policy had to be brought before council. We're really running out of time to get something adopted and this was the best effort to get something before the council.
So if we wish to, and we have two possibilities. One certainly is to include the items that you've touched upon and perhaps some others or not. What's the consequence of, well, of both of those? What's the consequence of us taking another deep breath and going back to the options we've been presented, of which there are three for this evening? Direct staff to return for more information, this might be part of that to incorporate. Why would we not do that? If you're suggesting there's some items that we should include and because of the speed we haven't been able to, well, what if we take that time? And I know there's the January 14th date. I'm not sure how to relate to that, quite frankly, what the consequences are if we don't. We have no 4G applications, 5G applications, the world is going to come to a sudden screeching halt?
So we have none from Verizon. It's not clear if there are any from AT&amp;T or any of the infrastructure providers like Crown Castle or Exnet that are currently considering deployment in San Rafael. I don't...
Sorry for the mic. It's our fault.
It's my apologies. So there are other companies outside of Verizon that deploy wireless infrastructure. I don't know their current deployment plans in the city of San Rafael. To the extent that they do have applications in the works, it would be important to have an ordinance that can address them, should they be submitted. The creative and the unique thing about doing this by a resolution is that the resolution can be amended very quickly. So whatever the city council decides to adopt or not adopt can be amended with learned experience and learned information quicker than an ordinance otherwise would.
And that would be your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to get something on the books for January 14th to be able to comply with the FCC's rules and then take, you know, requests to modify that document consistent with discussion. I think the discussion we've had here today can be incorporated into the draft that we provide to you on December 17th. Whether that document is changed over time, I think, is an open question. I assume it would be.
So you'd recommend a documentation, a document, it's getting late, for us to adopt on the 17th, that is, two weeks from now?
That's correct. That is currently city staff's recommendation, yes.
And let me ask the city staff, is that still your recommendation, considering the testimony we've heard and the comments from Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, again, our operating parameters have been to try and get something on the books by January 15th, with the intention of continually updating that as we get more knowledge and experience. So that would follow that process.
And what would that timeframe be? Any idea?
For the updates?
Yes. Well, the updates, including, I mean, I'd listed six items that were suggested by, and we appreciate your help in this, by Mr. Johnson for consideration. So we kind of identified, perhaps, let's say, but through...
I think the one concept would be to take the testimony received tonight, vet that through the subcommittee and figure out how we can incorporate those comments that would work into a draft to bring it back to you on the 17th. That way, there's something that's adopted by a January 14th deadline. Then, from that point, the more we learn, the more information we get, fine-tuning, we can do that through subsequent resolution amendments at future council meetings.
And I'm not trying to preempt, I'm just trying to sort out where we're at and where we're going with this thing. And Jim, does that, the city attorney, does that make sense to you?
I'll start and then turn it over to you.
Either or. Interchangeable.
So just to clarify, the staff recommendation tonight was to accept the report and provide direction back to us on what you'd like to see in an urgency ordinance. There is actually an urgency ordinance in front of you tonight. So I agree with Rafi in feeling that some of the things that we've heard tonight, we can make changes right away into the recommendation. I do think it makes sense, if the subcommittee is available, to try to get together with the subcommittee. It would be this week. I don't think it would take very long, this type of things that Michael just said, to consider, and then come back on the 17th with a recommendation. If there's anything that the council, I know it's a late hour and we've talked about this for a while, if there's anything that the council has specifically on page 12, where there's kind of a list of all the things that we included so far, that you feel that you want to provide more input on, or if you feel like we've already heard the input from you and the public tonight, that's fine, too. If there's any further, kind of more clear direction you'd like to give on any of those things, that would be great. If not that, then I would suggest that staff works with our subcommittee, incorporates as much as we can through what we heard this evening, that we would still recommend to you, and then bring that back on the 17th.
And it seems like a reasonable approach to me. And we've heard a lot tonight, and it's a little hard to assimilate so much, I would suggest. So that even if we don't add the comments this evening, we could convey those to you and you could work with the subcommittee and incorporate, and obviously come back and we can then further modify. I think the recommendations, yours as well as the staff, I think it makes sense, but certainly, at this point, solicit input from the fellow council members.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Andrew. Well, so I'll just make a couple of comments, but I do want to address specifically the process here. I just want to thank everybody who showed up today. Many people have already left, but many have stayed around. I think we heard a lot of interesting commentary, a lot of important issues have been raised. Leaving aside the very specific issue that we're not supposed to consider as we formulate an ordinance going forward, I think this has been an important vetting process. But I think it's part of a longer, ongoing dialogue we need to continue to have, both with those who showed up today and also the larger community, the members of the public, 24,999 other people who didn't show up today, or have not sent in emails, or have not in some way represented their point of view. I think we've also learned something very interesting in the process, which is that we are in the middle of this tension between what appears to be allowed legally and what the community may want, which those two may not be entirely the same. And as policymakers, we need to struggle with where do we find ourselves as a community on that spectrum? Not to use a term from telecom, but somewhere within that spectrum, we as a community have to figure out where we're going to land, or at least initially land, and then allow it to evolve by way of policymaking. So getting back to the mayor's comments here, I'm a little concerned about our acting in a way that doesn't incorporate feedback we've heard. I'm concerned about that, but I'm also concerned about not acting, or acting imprudently such that we don't have something in place come January 14th that's meaningful, that allows staff to process an application that may come in with language that enables that processing to be legally compliant. So I think that there's something minimally that we need to have in place. But I also want us to take the feedback we've learned, to take additional commentary from, or advice from council, to take the work that our council has done in San Anselmo and elsewhere, to look at the town of Burlington, what they've proposed, I find it very interesting just in scanning it, and to try to assimilate these other ideas from elsewhere, from the community. And as time passes, whether it's before or after January 14th, let's take that and see what makes its way into our ordinance and what continues to remain on the sidelines as we watch what transpires here. And I'm a little worried that what I'm suggesting doesn't necessarily satisfy this desire for a greater sense of urgency within some members of the community. But I'm afraid that until we know our consensus here, and now I'm getting to the larger policy question of where do we as a community find ourselves in terms of wanting to inhibit the development and proliferation of 5G versus place prudent safeguards out there? And we haven't had that conversation as a council yet. This is the beginning of our joint efforts. Kate and I, on the committee, have done our own work, and I expect that we're going to be meeting with some of the folks who have already expressed their point of view. But this process has to come back to the council, and we need more input from the larger community as well on some of these issues. Because I can tell you right now, I've heard from some people who were afraid to come here this evening, but what they tell me is they don't share the health concerns and they want to see more and more access, wireless access, mobile access, as they go about doing their business and their personal stuff in the community. We have to consider that perspective as well. So I want to see the conversation continue, but I would like to see us get something on the books in time for January 14th, and then have an evolving process where we take the input we've heard, we vet it legally, we also then determine, policy-wise, where we're settling on this continuum, and so we can import that into our resolution process.
And I would agree with that, and I certainly appreciate the subcommittee delving into this more deeply, and obviously, the community has got to recognize that we have a little bit of a conundrum before us with the representation we've had this evening, recognizing that there are many within the community. Quite frankly, we all have our cellphones and our iPads, and technology is going to continue to evolve, and we need to make sure that it's safe, let's face it. But at the same time, this train is moving to the benefit of virtually many, many, I don't know all, but certainly many. If you look at some of the aspects of further technology, it's spectacular, and it's going to improve all of our lives, I would suggest. So I'm going to look at the benefit of this feature, as well as some of the concerns, and try to find a balance in that equation for the community as a whole. I think you might have a comment, or maybe not.
Yeah, no, no. No. So I also want to concur with what Andrew said. Thank you all for coming down tonight. I feel like I'm like really, really close to this. In addition to your public testimony, we also did receive many emails with many links, and I know from talking to John, he clicked through on a lot, and so did I. The video, we'd actually already seen that, but it was nice to have it edited, actually, a little bit down for this evening. So to me, always, these decisions come down to trade-offs and what you're willing to accept in your community. Andrew said that there's some that would want to have faster speeds, and other ones say, "We don't want faster speeds because we're worried about the health effects." So again, there's been a lot of that conversation tonight about what is the trade-offs? What are we willing to accept as a community, and what are individuals willing to accept? And this is the first part of a longer conversation. And we might not be able to get at all of that in the policy, but those are the types of discussions that we have as we create policy. And it's been very clear that many in the room would be happy, would encourage the city to potentially join one of the lawsuits. And I would like to ask, I don't know if it's the city manager or the city attorney, if that was something that we were going to entertain. My sense is it would be done not in this form, but that is one of my questions, so hold that. I have a few more, so I'd like to hear from that. And I do want to thank staff for all the time. I mean, their presentation was short, but Andrew and I can attest, they spent hours and hours talking to people, hearing their concerns, reaching out to other communities, and really getting a lot of the information. I concur that looking at the ordinances, proposed ordinances of San Anselmo or the town of Burlington, which might be considered a little bit more bold than where we are now, I would support doing that. When I look at those, the 500-foot setbacks, 50-foot height, 1,500-feet separations, let's start looking at those numbers. In terms of monitoring, five-year monitoring, I am swayed by the public testimony that is longer than what we currently have of three. What can we do that is tighter than that timeline? We talked a little bit about fees. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for talking about that and mentioning it. Recertification, can there be an annual recertification fee like there is in the town of Burlington? Concept of exceptions, we heard that from the public, that we should look at exceptions. Again, I think some of that work's already been done by other jurisdictions, it's something that subcommittee, I think, and staff will look at. I am very keen to further discuss the possibility of prohibiting in residential neighborhoods in spite of the fact that might put a little bit of a bull's eye on our back. I think it's prudent that we have that discussion based on the community feedback we've had. And then my last question, in addition to the first one I asked, is about CEQA that came up. One of the, we got some public input about it, but the environmental part around it, the review. Very clearly, I understand that we cannot have a CEQA review for individual wireless installments. Is there, and it's either for both of you, is there precedence of having a CEQA review for all wireless? So we often will do, or we have done blanket CEQA reviews when there's something that comes forward, and then would that be a possibility here that we would have, or we could somehow ask for a CEQA review? So again, getting at some of the other environmental concerns. I don't know if that's been done by other jurisdictions, and again, it's not imposing on one carrier more than the other because it would actually be on 5G altogether. So those are my last, my two questions.
Okay, John?
This is a tough one for all of us, and I'm torn. I don't quite understand the timing of when we find out that there's actual harm. Is it five years? Is it 10 years? Is it 15 years? You know, you go back and look at cigarettes, and everything was fine there, and smoke them up, and 20, 30 years later, everybody's saying, "Don't do that," and we have a surgeon-generals warning on those packages. We talked about earlier, a couple of years ago, adding to our smoking ordinance in San Rafael to add vaping. But people said, "Oh, we don't understand what's going on and what are going to be the effects of the vape pens." And we still don't completely understand. It's, again, it's a new technology. So, you know, how fast do we need to go? Is 5G it? Is 6G it in 10 years? Is 10G in five more years? And where does that go? I looked back at it, you know, as we were listening to this, I did a little surfing and found a report from the Obama administration on their, I think it was $400 million grant to the telecommunications industry to build more infrastructure, to do more research about, you know, taking it past 4G, and this was when 4G LTE was out there, and to talk about 5G. So where is this going to stop? And are we ever going to understand what the ill effects are, if there are any? And will it be too late? I mean, I'm a parent, as a lot of us are. I have a young child who has an iPad, and we have an iPad, we have cellphones. Is that enough for us? At this point, I haven't been sold that there aren't going to be any ill effects of this technology so close to the ground, so close together. You know, I might be the lone wolf up here, but I don't understand why we wouldn't do as much as we can to, I guess, prohibit as much as we could until we have a complete understanding. But again, I'm torn because I don't know when we will ever have that complete understanding of what the health and safety risks will be. So do we just put out a ban and say, "Come and sue us"? Because they will, and under what we're being advised, we'll probably lose. But actually, at this point, I'm okay with that, if it doesn't end up costing us a lot of money. I don't know. I mean, I'm not looking for applause on that, I'm just trying to understand what the, because we do have a duty to the citizens and the community. And if it's going to be a large monetary fine again and again and again, or cost to hire attorneys again and again and again to defend this, if we're just going to lose, I don't know where the trade-off is on that. So for me, I would like to see, in any sort of ordinance, as strict as we possibly can for now, taking the San Anselmo pieces, the Burlington pieces, and push it to the limits. Is it 100 feet? I don't want 100-foot poles everywhere either. I'm not looking for that. But push it to the absolute extreme that we can. Keep it away from the schools for now. Keep it away from as many residential areas as we possibly can, you know? Just, if we're going to push it, then let's push it as far as we can. I don't know that we will win. I don't know that we'll have the grounds to win on any of this stuff, but I think it's worth the effort to lead until we can truly feel comfortable that this stuff is going to be safe. I don't know when that will ever be, but, because technology will change tomorrow, and someone else will come out with the next thing. So hopefully, they'll make it as safe as we possibly can.
Okay. It has...
Mayor, I just want to make sure we answer Councilmember Collins' questions.
Okay. Please do.
So the first one on the CEQA review, Michael, can you speak to that from a, I think what we're asking is some sort of blanket review that does CEQA analysis, environmental analysis for overall cellular?
You can do CEQA for any individual application, it just has to comply with the shot clock. It's not preempted by federal law.
But could we do CEQA as opposed to do an individual? Could you do a CEQA review?
I don't know if I understand the question, because for a CEQA review, you have to have a defined project. And if there's no defined project, then it's difficult to define the parameters of the review to be performed.
But I know that we have done CEQA reviews.
Yeah, I think the examples you maybe talked about is whether we do CEQA review for adoption of this ordinance and the resolution. That would be, I guess, what you're considering, the blanket CEQA review, not the specific projects.
Correct.
So this ordinance is under CEQA, not a project. It doesn't result in the deployment of anything. Individual applications would be reviewed under CEQA as individual projects. These facilities are exempt, or not applicable under CEQA, for an ordinance project.
So there isn't any example of a community somehow using CEQA? I mean, because what we've been talking about is environmental factors, a whole range of them, right? And I'm just trying to get my head around that there's not any way to use a tool that California feels very strongly about when it comes to...
I think the tool is individual CEQA review on a case-by-case basis when projects do come through the pipeline, so you can define the parameters of the project and review that individual project.
Or for the grouped projects, if there is a whole string of them in, let's say, along a whole corridor, to review those. But again, we're bound a little bit by the shot clock, unless that's not something we're going to...
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, it's not that CEQA review isn't allowed, it's that there's a concern about the amount of time that it takes to do a CEQA review.
Yes.
But we could actually have that as part of what we're looking at.
For every application, you could require CEQA, the risk is violation of the shot clock.
I understand. I understand.
Okay. So I'll take the question about participating in litigation, which is, that's certainly a conversation we're glad to have. Councilmember Collins is correct, I wouldn't recommend having it in this forum. We have access to Michael, we can discuss further. And I don't think tonight's the night for that, but I'm glad to pursue it, further discussion.
So is that a closed-session conversation?
That would be my advice. And then the council can decide what it wishes to deliberate about in open session.
And is that how the other jurisdictions went ahead and did the law? I mean, not that what they do is what we're going to do, but is that how they went ahead and proceeded on the lawsuit? That they joined, speaking specifically of Fairfax and the county of Marin?
I don't know that.
Okay.
For the cities that joined ours, there was a vote by the city council to join the litigation. It occurred in an open setting, but whether it was considered in closed session beforehand is probably very likely.
Certainly an area for more consideration, maybe the subcommittee can address that as well. Let's move on. The city manager's referencing a November 1st article announcing that Marin County was going to join with 20 cities and counties in a legal challenge to the federal policy on 5G. And it states that the decision was announced by the Board of Supervisors after a closed session meeting. I infer that the closed session concerned the decision whether to participate in litigation. Okay, are we ready? Then is there a motion with regard to this item? We're going to accept the report and perhaps refer the matter to our subcommittee, come back at the next meeting with further modification to the ordinance.
I think you've fairly articulated how I might have made the motion.
So maybe you could make that motion.
Okay, well, I'm going to plagiarize. And I move that we accept the report, and we do direct staff to come back with language for our consideration by way of an urgency ordinance and resolution on December 17th, after taking into consideration not only what we've heard this evening, but after a meeting with the subcommittee, so that we can engage in further conversation about... in further conversation about, well, to provide feedback after our further conversation with the community, and also so that on December 17th, we can talk more about the larger policy issue here, which would drive what we do on December 17th and what we may do thereafter. That's the motion.
Good paraphrase. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Further comments, none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I am matter carries four zero. Thanks, everybody, for helping us through this and thus far. Thank you very much. We'll now turn to item... Ladies and gentlemen, we're going now turn to item 7B, funding affordable housing.
Thank you, I'm Karen.
No, no. I'll keep it though.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we ready to go?
Good evening, almost good morning.
Good evening, yes. I've sandwiched this.
No, we're continuing session, thank you.
Glorious evening. So tonight, we're here to discuss the homeless emergency aid program, so I'll be brief with this. The state has authorized one-time funding through SB 850 for $500 million for local jurisdictions to... Should we wait, or?
Yeah, why don't you wait a second?
Wait one more minute.
Further, ladies and gentlemen, further discussion would be appreciated outside. Sir?
Hey, folks, we're going to continue the rest of the meeting here, so we can get out of here. Folks?
Would you, Lindsey, would you ask him to leave? So many... Thank you. Okay, Andrew, sorry.
Okay. So, we are here to discuss the homeless emergency aid program, so this is a one-time state funding opportunity to the tune of $500 million across the state that's been authorized through SB 850. Every jurisdiction throughout the state of California has received a non-competitive allocation of funding, and Marin County, that allocation was about $4.8 million. The state has asked each community's continuum of care, which is basically the local funding body that determines state and federal funding allocations, to deliberate on how best to use that funding. The final application is due by the end of this calendar year, so December 31st, so it's a pretty rapid turnaround. I include it here for a little late-night humor. The context for this was that the mayors from the 11 biggest cities in California came together to advocate for this funding, so, Mr. Mayor, if it had been 12, we might have gotten a billion, but, you know.
We've been right there.
The homeless policy steering committee, which is the local COC, convened a working group to determine our local priorities. In brief, the projects that were preferred were permanent supportive housing, or housing diversion, which is basically trying to keep people out of our housing system if possible, focusing on chronic homelessness, and then also, of course, integration with the coordinated entry system. With the local priorities, the county issued an RFP, and they ultimately received seven applications, two of which were funded. One was for St. Vincent's for $300,000 for a two-year diversion pilot, so again, trying to help people navigate to non, basically government-provided housing solutions. And then the second was for Homer Bound's Mill Street 2.0 project, so that was $4.5 million. So, next steps, per the HEAP guidelines, for any project that receives or has been awarded capital funding, the jurisdiction where that project is located must declare a shelter crisis. That's basically the criteria that's in the state law. As defined in the code, it's a situation where a significant number of persons are without the ability to obtain shelter, resulting in a threat to public health and safety. We have reviewed the law around what declaring the crisis means, and I've included the language here, I know it's kind of small. Essentially, it doesn't open the city up to any kind of fast-track zoning or anything that would take away any of our control. If anything, it actually would allow the city, if we wanted to pursue it, more flexibility around providing emergency shelter. We'd be able to waive some liability issues, and then we'd also be able to reduce some health and safety requirements as well, just to accommodate the shelter need. So, yeah, so that's why we're here tonight. So, we did have Homer Bound and the county here to talk about the projects and the process, if there are any questions. I think I can speak to any of it if you have questions, but that is all.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you once again for a good report. Any comments, questions?
I had a lot of questions from the county, but I'm going to hold them.
I know you do. Anyone from the public? John?
Just to say, I mean...
Quick, John, quick.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing things about the 5G, that's very informative, but also about this. We need to provide as much money as we can for people to face homelessness and receive with that money that we need to get to the various providers of homeless services, including them as shelters, possibly, I don't know. I know we want to coordinate the energy, we're getting people that are chronically homeless, and that's good, but there's still people on the streets.
Well, we're not done, John. I mean, you know, four and a half's not bad.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, continue with the funding, we need to continue the funding for the homeless, I appreciate that.
Thanks, John. Further comments, questions? Their motion with regard to this item?
I would move approval that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
And second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I am matter carries four zero. We'll now turn to councilmembers' reports.
Very quickly, I'm your Marin Transit rep, both for San Rafael and for MCCMC. We had our meeting today. I have my hard copy of our financial report. It was a clean audit. It was for 2017, ending June 30th, 2018. If you would like to review it, I will loan it to you. For those in the audience, you can actually go online and see it. It really looks at all the financial picture of Marin Transit.
Very hot item.
Yeah.
I'll just add a couple of quick things. I think that Jim might have mentioned, well, perhaps should have mentioned, we received, correct me if I'm wrong, 1.2 million on the bike path to extend it from here to there. Pension committee is established, except we now need one person, so we're almost there with regard to the pension committee. We met with the fire chiefs, got 39 bold points with regard to fire. We'll talk about how we're going to fund that. I'm probably going to come up with something for next year. And, what was that? Oh, we've received quite a number of VPAC applications. I've boiled it down to 12. We'll be interviewing those 12 for six positions. So, that's all I've got, anybody?
Yeah, I just have one, and it pertains to what we talked about this evening. So, at the last Marin Telecommunications Agency meeting, one of the agenda items was whether or not the MTA should join with a consortium of local entities, not the county and Fairfax, to oppose 5G by way of initially additional comment to the FCC to seek review and reversal of their ruling. The MTA agreed to earmark the $3,500 that was asked by the firm, Best, Best &amp; Krieger, for their participation. I actually voted against it, although it passed, but I voted against it not for reasons that we discussed here tonight, but because it goes to the issue of control over franchise fees, and how franchise fees should or shouldn't be diverted for decisions by the MTA or pursue an advocacy agenda where the cities themselves might use those fees for their own reason. So, but we did get into a fairly extended conversation about this, the FCC and advocacy around the country seeking to oppose the FCC's recent ruling on 5G, and some of that will translate to the discussion, or is translating into the discussion we're having here.
Thanks for that. Let's see, San Rafael and Cesar, we are adjourned.